If everyone could take a seat, we'd like to begin. First thing, if you have your cellphone with you, please put them on silent. We'd appreciate it. Before we open the 2025 Annual Town Meeting, we're going to begin with the invocation, to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So I would ask you to please rise, if you're able. It gives me great pleasure to introduce Reverend Jeremy Wagner from the St. Oscar Romero Parish, who will deliver the invocation.
This is a prayer taken from Pope Francis's message for the World Day of Peace 2016. All too often, Lord, we turn away from the world's many problems, which seem too big, too complex, or too far away. Forgive us our indifference. It is easier, Lord, to see only what is around us: our lives, our homes, our challenges. Forgive us our isolation. Help us to see with your eyes, eyes which notice one another and help us understand. Help us to dream your dream of communities that reach out and dialogue, and where diverse people creatively cooperate. Help us to be people of solidarity and action, so moved by prayer and counter and understanding that peace can become a reality. Amen.
And now for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under the bud, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Now, I'd like to introduce Chief Robbery, before we go any further.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to go over some safety issues, go over the fire exits, in the case we have to evacuate the building. If you're down front, we have an exit down here to the left, also an exit over to the right. And if you're in the back, the way you came in is probably the quickest way out, into the right. We'll bring you right outside. Any medical emergencies? I have firefighters in the back. Just stand up, give us a hall, we'll be glad to help you. Thank you.
Okay, the annual, 2025 Annual Town Meeting is hereby called to order. The Chair will now entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the warrant.
The move, Matt Clark.
It has been moved to dispense with the reading of the warrant. Do I hear a second? Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to dispense with the reading of the warrant. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and it is so voted unanimously. We'll now entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the Constable's return.
The move, Matt Clark.
Do I hear a second? Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to dispense with the reading of the Constable's return. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and it is so voted unanimously. Article 1, to elect a moderator to preside at this town meeting to serve until the commencement of the Annual Town Meeting in 2026. We will now entertain nominations for the position of moderator. The name of Gerald Salvatore has been nominated. Do I hear a second? Do I hear any other nominations? Nominations are declared closed. All those in favor of electing Gerald Salvatore to serve as moderator, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, and it is so voted unanimously. Do you solemnly swear that you uphold the Constitution of the United States of America and its laws?
I do.
Do you solemnly swear that you uphold the Constitution of the common law of Massachusetts and its laws?
I do.
Do you solemnly swear that you uphold the bylaws of the town of Canton and faithfully and impartially perform your duties as moderator for the town?
I do.
Thank you, everyone, and good evening. Thank you for attending this evening as well. Just to remind everyone, all of you voters here in attendance, do constitute the legislative branch of our town government. The articles and reports before you this evening are the culmination of a considerable amount of effort and work, dedication, and countless hours by several boards, committees, and individuals here in the town. Tonight, we will give all presenters and speakers due attention and respect. Speakers will only be recognized at a microphone. When at a microphone, please state your name and your address, so that we'll know who we have. If you're at a microphone and you're speaking on behalf of someone, please identify that right away and clearly say so. Again, as Ms. Kenny said, could you please silence your phones? And we do ask that you please do not use your device in any way that might be disruptive to the meeting, or in any way interfere, or make any of the other attendees uncomfortable. We do have a consent agenda, which you all saw printed in the warrant. We'll go over that shortly. We also have some clustered articles tonight, due to their subject matter, and that also will be covered shortly. Before we do get started, I do ask for your indulgence. I'd like to take a minute to recognize someone. As most of you know, I once served on the Select Board. When I was first elected, there was a person there on the board who had already served for five terms. I served with him for four terms. When I retired from the board, he then went on to serve for an additional three terms. That's 12 terms, 36 years in office, the longest and most distinguished member of the board in the history of the town. Would you all please join me? I know he couldn't be here this evening, but I'm very confident that he's either watching or be watching the replay. Would you please join me this evening and just congratulate and thank John Conley for his service to the town of Canton? Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Let's get to work. Ms. Kenny, the ping pong balls. Two, yes. All right. So we're going to move on to Article 2.
Can everyone hear me? Okay. Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves motion 1 is printed in the warrant.
Excellent. Do we have a second? Motion's been made and seconded for discussion.
The motions, this motion simply sets the initial meeting date for this Annual Town Meeting to May 12th, today, tonight, and establishes the starting time at 7:00 PM and sets the adjournment time tonight at 11:00 PM. The motion also sets an additional meeting date of May 14th, if needed.
Excellent. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I declare it a unanimous vote. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves motion 2 as printed in the warrant.
Excellent. We have a motion, is it seconded? Motion made and seconded for discussion.
This motion grants, this motion grants permission for those individuals named in the motion as printed to participate in the Annual Town Meeting, but not to vote.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I declare the vote unanimous. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves motion 3 as printed in the warrant.
We have a motion been made, do I hear a second? Seconded for discussion.
This motion ensures that we have a balanced budget tonight. If someone wants, a member of the town meeting wants to increase the amount for a spending item from what is proposed in the original relevant motion, they must identify an item somewhere within the spending articles to cut, to balance the budget, or designate another legal revenue source to use to fund it.
Fantastic. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I declare the vote unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now we'll move on to hearing reports from committees that are pointed at prior town meetings. Is Mr. Manning present?
I think, I think I have to move.
Mr. Manning.
I have to move that they hear it first.
As he's approaching the microphone, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves Article 3 as printed in the warrant to hear the reports of the committees appointed by town meeting.
Do I hear a second? Seconded. Mr. Manning, welcome.
Good evening. Gene Manning, 12 Harrison Road, Chairman of the Economic Development Committee, here tonight just to give our annual EDC report to town meeting. Next slide, please. Just for town meeting's update, we present this every year, but our goal is to provide a very vibrant and strong economic development base for the town. The Economic Development Committee is appointed by the Select Board. Additionally, we help ensure stable commercial tax revenue flow for town services, help to increase the property value of residences and businesses in our community by ensuring a growth-oriented economic development plan, and to maintain Canton's reputation here in Massachusetts through the Select Board as a business-friendly community. Next slide. The town, despite strong headwinds nationally and here in Massachusetts, as I think many town meeting members are aware, the town did have some, some good news and some good growth in the town. I'll just start by highlighting Remtech. It's a new 55,000-square-foot building pictured on the right here at 5 Campagnelli Circle. This business relocated from Norwood, which was terrific. Later on tonight, we'll be hearing Article 21, which is an expedited permitting for 30 Dan Road, which is 140,000-square-foot site. As many of you may have noticed, if you've gone down 138 on Turnpike Street, the demolition of the former 99 Restaurant, and there'll be construction beginning there shortly on a new self-service storage facility. In addition to that, one of our favorite Canton businesses, I know we're all very proud to have them here, is Trillium Brewery at 100 Royal Street with their new brewery and distillery. Next slide. I just wanted to highlight Trillium in particular. Every year, the committee looks at what is new in Canton, but this particular year, because of economic headwinds and the circumstances surrounding business development, we looked at what is growing in Canton. So I just wanted to highlight Trillium. If you haven't been up there, I strongly recommend that you take a ride up at the top of Royal Street. It's a fantastic facility. The picture on the lower left is their outdoor facility, and on the upper left is a new brewing facility that they just added in 2024. They bought that equipment from another brewery. They also added a distillery, and they expanded about 50,000 square feet. Their valuation went up in town, which meant more business taxes. They are a great business owner. They work very closely with the Select Board, with the town administrator, and with various town departments. So we just want to thank them and highlight their growth, and they love being in Canton. We also opened Pledge Therapeutics, which is over on Dan Road. Next slide. This is just a summary. I'll jump to the second one first, because I think it's a pretty impressive number. The commercial and industrial valuation in town is $1.6 billion. Lot of money, and it generates a lot of revenue, which we'll be voting on tonight. The business community paid $39 million in commercial and industrial taxes in 2024, which is 39.5% inside the levy. We're one of the top Norfolk County communities, continue to lead that trend. And also, just wanted to mention the tax rate, which is very important. Leverage for residential taxes, I think as most residents are aware, we have a split tax rate, which dropped to 9.89 per thousand, lowest in 16 years. And the commercial rate dropped to 20.45. So as the Select Board believes, our committee does, that a strong business base helps keep residential taxes, myself and all of you, low in the community. Next slide. This is our annual chart that I present. I think everyone here in Canton should be really proud of this. You know, our peer communities, I know like me, are all very competitive and proud of Canton, and when you look at these numbers, this is the percent of industrial commercial revenue inside the levy. So we're really doing a great job with that, led by our Select Board and town committees. Next slide. Just additional engagement, 25 Canton businesses will be offering scholarships pretty soon. I know the Canton High Scholarship Program's coming up in the next week or two. In addition, there's annual contributions to the Senior Center, the Canton Food Pantry, and the CABI Organization, which I'm sure everyone is aware of, has been in town for over 50 years, and the road race is held in September. 600 runners, and all the money goes right back to the town. And this is our great committee. Everyone here is volunteers, appointed by the Select Board. I would also just like to thank this current Select Board and past Select Boards over the last 25 years of EDC's founding for their leadership in business development, along with the Building Commissioner, Police, Fire, Planning Board, Zoning Board, there are many, many different folks that contribute. So, Mr. Moderator, that concludes my presentation. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Moving on, do we have, is Izzy Nolan here? Any Representative Acasa? Excellent.
Good evening. My name is Tyler Ratacone. Izzy's not available tonight, so I'll be stepping in to give the Acasa update. I'm the Parks and Recreation Director. Go to the next slide. So Izzy Nolan is our program manager. She is actually funded through a grant, which we're currently in year six of, or year five of that grant, which we just resubmitted for year six, and that'll be a, hopefully, another five-year grant. Her main job is providing youth with new programs, providing one-to-one counseling, going into health classes, speaking. She recently became, as of last year, a Certified Dare Officer, and she's been doing a lot of great work within the middle school and high school with the students. So that's the overview of her, her role. The Acasa Committee, specifically Harriet, she oversees and runs the Celebration of Life, which is a great event, which we all hope to see everyone there. It's such a wonderful night, where we celebrate the lives of the lost ones from either overdose or some sort of substance abuse, and it's a time for us to get together and celebrate and remember the lives of those we lost. So that is August 29th this year, at 7:00 PM, right at the Senior Center. Last year, Izzy started a program over the summer, which was a leaders and training program. It was an opportunity for 12- to 14-year-olds to get firsthand experience, work experience, and develop their leadership skills. She used the DARE curriculum, and this year, we actually are running it again. It was so successful, we had a lot of parent feedback of how much they loved it, that we're going to be running it again this summer. It's already sold out for the summer, and, you know, it gives an opportunity for these 12-, 13-, 14-year-olds, right before they start working, to get hands-on experience at some of our camps, but also they get to go on a couple field trips a week and be kids themselves. So it's a, it's a great opportunity, led by Izzy herself. Izzy actually started this program or event two years ago, so be on the lookout for it. It's called the Summer Blast Off. It's right before school year starts. It's a family event to close out the summer. We have a talent show, inflatables, movie night. We get our youth leaders that she works with all, all year to help out with that event. So be on the lookout for a flyer for that. It's right before school starts, so end of summer. We've recently been getting into the high school as well, where she has been talking to a lot of the freshman classes, health classes. She's been doing team-building activities, and we've been trying to figure out, especially now with prom season and graduation coming up, figure out more ways to get into the schools and do some different programming. I believe she did a program, bringing in some of the drunk goggles, where the kids got to, you know, did do some activities to see what it would be like to, you know, be impaired, and how, how serious this can, can be to your life. So she's been doing sorts of things like that, and we're going to be doing more of those activities coming up in the next month or so as well. Last year, she started a program, it was called Lunch Leaders with the Middle School. This is a tremendous program. I get to see it firsthand, it's awesome. She goes into the schools almost every, every day, if not every day, every other day, to the middle school, where she has a group of middle school leaders, where they, you know, she'll meet with them at lunchtime, they'll discuss issues that are occurring in the schools, anything between bullying or mental health, things that the kids see. And they actually also plan events for her during the year and lead those events. They planned a 7th grade winter ball, which was very successful. The kids loved it. There was no school dance for the 7th graders, so this is something that she took the initiative with these youth leaders, and they planned this event. They did someone's special dance as well, where the youth leaders actually ran that event with her. They're going to be doing a middle school open-mic night, and there's going to be a bunch of open gyms and different events for the middle school kids coming up soon, too. This year was our first year doing the Peer Leadership Group in the high school, which is through, it's a, through the District Attorney's Office. They meet monthly, there's all sorts of campaigns and programs that they have to do throughout the year. The program just ended, they actually just finished up their Gillette Conference this past April, which was at Gillette, where they did a presentation, and, you know, it was a great, overall great opportunity for these 12 high school leaders to participate and do things for the community and, and help out. Other community events that Acasa kind of helps out with is the farmer's market, the health fair, trunk or treat. Izzy collaborates a lot with the library, doing different events, going over there to help, you know, talk with some of the teens that are over there, and they, I think last year, they set up a handful of Narcan boxes throughout the town as well. And that is the update on Acasa. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now hear from the Bylaw Modernization Study Committee, Mr. Camo.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. George Camo, 225 Sherman Street. This is a report from the Article 30 Committee, which is the Bylaw Modernization Committee that was approved by last year's town meeting. First of all, I'd like to thank Moderator Stady for the opportunity for all of us to serve. Our committee includes Mr. Michael Loffrin, who served as Vice Chair this year, Louis Jutres as our clerk, Dr. Susan Harrington, Jennifer Chameleon, Dr. William Kringle, Paul McCollough III, Gilda McGonigal, Randy Scollins, and Bill Quinn was just appointed in April. The head of vacancy, Mr. Loffrin, stepped off, and so we have a new appointment. We began our work in August, and the full committee has met eight times at this point. We defined our task early on by meeting with the Finance Committee representatives and the petitioners of Article 30. This was the article that set aside approximately $22,000 for a committee to study the existing bylaws here in Canton and suggest modernization to those bylaws. I want to be clear, though, this is not a charter commission. We're not in any way changing the governance of the community. It was clearly our task to look at the bylaws and create pathways to modernization for those bylaws. That's 245 pages, ladies and gentlemen, of material that we have to work through. So early on, we took on the task to decide how to do this work that was set before us with, with very little guidance, other than the thoughts that came to us from town meeting and the warrant article itself. We decided at that point to undertake a codification process, so that could we truly understand these bylaws. They grew up in an unruly fashion over 30 or 40 years, and so our job was to put some form and practice to them. We executed a contract with a company called General Code, and the idea was to build on accessibility and transparency. So... accessibility and transparency, so that anybody could come to our community, go to our website, and find the exact bylaw and the effects of that bylaw would have upon them. So this is a technical focus of this particular group. When we contracted with General Code, we were pleased to discover they had done this work all over the nation, but more particular, in Norfolk County, with 28 communities, they had only, they'd done all those communities except for three, and Canton was one of those. So their goal for us now is to undertake an editorial and legal analysis of our bylaws, which will provide for us, the committee, an in-depth review for legislation inconsistencies, duplications, conflicts with current state law, and taking us away from outdated or unclear wording. They will provide us with practical recommendation and give us suggested modernization recommendations. At the time that we contracted with them, we also decided, although it was outside of our purview, we asked them what it would cost to include the zoning bylaws and the regulations of the Planning Board. In the economy of scale, we included those elements. Although this committee is not responsible, we got amazing buy-in from your Planning Board, from your Zoning Board, from the Town Clerk, and so those will also be codified at the same time. If this all sounds rather boring, it is. It's really a practical task that we've undertaken, but I will assure you that we will do our work and present to town meeting in approximately 18 to 24 months, a newly codified, updated, and modern set of bylaws for this community. At that same time, we'll also be making recommendations to this body for improvements in how we communicate, how we vote at town meeting, how we execute some of our committees and commissions, and how the structure of the community is put together. So those are our next steps over the next year and a half, almost two years, and we will look for those improvements, but you will decide whether or not those improvements will go into the new bylaws, and we'll be very judicious in our process of accessing that information and providing you with that information. Finally, tonight, you will be asked to vote on Article 18. It's a supplemental appropriation for the committee. It's a $20,000 request, and that will be used, if the committee deems that it's necessary, to retain additional assistance or consultancies to assist us in our ongoing work. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and present this information.
Thank you, Mr. Camo. Mr. Chairman, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves Article 4 as printed in the warrant.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. The consent agenda allows the voters to act on multiple articles in one vote. These articles are considered to be non-controversial, and some are standing articles that have no items to consider for this annual town meeting. If any voter wishes to discuss any of these articles listed in this motion in more detail, simply request a hold when I read through the list of articles, and we will address the article separately. The first is Article 5, Collective Bargaining Agreements Under the Select Board. Article 6, Personal Service Contracts Under the Select Board. Article 7, Pay Bills of Prior Fiscal Years. Article 8, Adjust Fiscal Year 2025 Accounts. Article 9, Authorize Certain Revolving Fund Spending Limits. Article 10, Insurance Proceeds in Excess of $150,000. And Article 22, Amend the General Bylaws Regarding the Composition of CASA. Seeing no holds, the following articles can be disposed of by a single vote in accordance with the Finance Committee motions for Article 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 22 as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we do have for Article 7, Paying Bills of the Prior Year, we need 4/5 majority vote on that, which would mean the entire consent agenda needs a 4/5 majority for passage. So is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I declare the vote unanimous.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves the motion for Article 20 as printed in the warrant.
Motion's been made. Do I hear a second? I hear a second for discussion.
The Finance Committee voted 7 to 1 to support this motion, which transfers $15,000 from free cash for the purpose of enabling the Planning Board, with the assistance of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, of which I'm also Chair, to engage a consultant to perform a five-year review and update to the Action Plan section of the 2020 Canton Master Plan.
Right. Is there any?
I was going to speak as Chair after.
Yep. Is there any further discussion on the floor? Seeing none, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. As Chair of the Finance Committee, Chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, I did want to tell the town meeting a bit about the update. The development of the current master plan was approved at ATM 2017 to replace the 2004 master plan, and the Master Plan Steering Committee worked during 2018 and 19 with the consulting firm of Horsley Witten and then the then-town planner Laura Smead to deliver the current master plan, which was approved by Planning Board in 2020. It's a 15-year plan involving a wide range of research from the consulting firm, with work from the committee, input from the local government, private businesses, commercial interests, the public, and other stakeholders in our town. And the three main books that were delivered, if members of the town meeting aren't familiar with the master plan, along with an appendix or a baseline that established existing conditions as of the 2018-19 drafting of it, as well as a roadmap that has findings and recommendations, and an action plan, which lists action plan items with responsible parties and timelines for implementation. The master plan includes strategic areas of housing in neighborhoods, public health and social well-being, town services, economic development and labor concerns, open space and recreation, transportation, historic resources, arts and culture, environmental protection, energy conservation and generation, natural hazards and climate change, with also three special focus areas, which are Canton Junction, the downtown, and Route 138. The goals for the first five years were laid out in a strategic framework from 2020 to 2025, based on the action plan, which is now reaching the end of its term. The Master Plan Implementation Committee, which I had mentioned when I was Finance Committee, speaking for the Finance Committee I'm the Chair of, has had the mission of working with responsible parties to help them implement the master plan, starting in 2021, when the committee was created by Select Board. Since the creation of the current master plan, Master Plan Action Plan, many things have been accomplished. Examples are the Affordable Housing Trust, improvements in stormwater management, encouragement of transit-oriented development through such zoning changes as the MBTA Communities Law, and changes to downtown zoning, some of which are on the article warrant tonight, while other things have changed, either due to the pandemic changing timelines or just changing times and conditions in town. To ensure that the master plan is a living document that is able to evolve with the times, our current interim town planner, TJ Torres, when he was the full-time town planner, and I recommended to the Master Plan Implementation Committee that we update this action plan and strategic framework of the master plan at its five-year point, and MPIC supported that in a vote in 2024. This update would essentially review the current action plan and determine what has been achieved and what obstacles prevented other items from being achieved. It will also consider the five years since the adoption of the master plan to see if new action items should be added. Having looked into the potential cost of this update, Article 20 would appropriate $15,000 to hire a consultant, and our new town planner, Connor Murphy, will be the primary person involved with the support and assistance with, along with the Master Plan Implementation Committee. In the end, it would lead to an updated action plan and a related strategic framework for the next five years of implementation that would allow the master plan to continue to serve the town well and continue also to provide guidance to bring articles to town meeting that best serve the town. I just also wanted to note that the article is supported by the Select Board, as I had mentioned, the Finance Committee, Master Plan Implementation Committee, and the Economic Development Committee. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I declare the vote unanimous.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves the motion for Article 21 as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Second been heard. For discussion, Mr. Chairman.
The Finance Committee unanimously supports this article, which would allow the town to apply to have the land parcel and building at 30 Dan Road designated as a priority development site by the Commonwealth for expedited local permitting, as defined by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 43D. This designation will help promote economic development in Canton and encourage new revenue for the town by encouraging redevelopment at 30 Dan Road, while not eliminating any of the reviews usually required for permitting in the town, only expediting them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Manning, please.
Yes, hi. Again, good evening. Gene Manning, 12 Harrison Road, Chairman of the Economic Development Committee. We have a presentation on this I'd just like to share with town meeting for Article 21. So 43D was adopted by town meeting about 20 years ago. It's an initiative supported by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Economic Development. And basically, it provides a site as a priority development for a local community. Part of that is with the guidelines that are set up. A building has to hit a couple of criteria. The first is that the building has to be 50,000 square feet. This building, 30 Dan Road, is 140,000 square feet. It has to be designated as a priority development site by the community. So the area of Dan Road, New Boston Road, and John Road was Canton Commerce Center, was developed as a priority development site by Canton Town Meeting in 2010. In addition, the 43D program was adopted by town meeting in 2005. Next slide. This is just an overview of the projects. This was actually a state piece that we've done. This site would be the 12th 43D we've done here in Canton, where 11 of 12, hopefully by a vote tonight, this will be the 12th property. We've generated about $38 million in commercial real estate transactions and about $850,000 in local taxes. Next slide. This is the property we're talking about. For those of you not familiar with Dan Road, it's down off 138, also known as Canton Commerce Center. So if you look at the map on the right side, you'll see Organogenesis, and to the right of that is 138. This is about halfway down from the corner of Randolph Street to the Stoughton Town Line. So at this point, I'd like to introduce Mr. Nick Trokey, who's the Executive Vice President of Jumbo Capital. Their company owns the building. They've been going through the marketing and sale of the property. They have a very large vested interest in Canton. So I'm going to turn it over to Nick, just to talk about the site.
Thank you, Gene. Appreciate it. Thank you, everyone, for the time tonight. As mentioned, I'm Nick Trokey. I'm with Jumbo Capital. We're a local landlord, owner, operator, developer out of Quincy, Massachusetts. We really pride ourselves on operating and working within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts with local towns and municipalities like yourselves. But we bought the building back in 2022 with the goal to redevelop it and add about 75,000 square feet of high bay, which you can see in the picture on the left side in the kind of gray taller space there, with the goal to ultimately lease this building to a clean biopharma manufacturing tenant. And really, with these buildings, what those want to look like, and what we delivered here is heavy utilities, flexibility, clear heights, and really the ability to, you know, rely on a quick streamlined execution to get into operation at the building. So to the point of kind of timeline with things, you know, the reason we would like to achieve this 43D ultimately is, at the end of the day, a lot of these tenants, what they're trying to achieve is approval through FDA process, and once that process is approved through the FDA, speed to production and manufacturing is hypercritical for the success of their drug or pharmaceutical or whatever it may be. So with the 43D expedited permitting and the shell building that we have here with robust utilities, we can provide a clean pathway for a CGMP tenant to come in, de-risk their timeline for execution, and ultimately spend far more money to build out the space and be manufacturing clean pharmaceuticals or biologics out of. So that's generally the rundown there.
Great. Thank you, Nick. In this area, just to let town meeting know, you know, this area is zoned, limited industrial. So later on throughout town meeting, and we spoke about it initially, this area is overseen, again, by the Building Commissioner, Ed Walsh. It is permitted. In addition to that, it's also overseen by the Zoning Board of Appeals and, of course, the Select Board. So it's in a biotech area already. So it's really a perfect fit for this area to help grow our business community and increase our business commercial tax revenue. Next slide. So this is the process. What does this mean tonight if town meeting votes in favor of this? Well, the next step, it will go to the Commonwealth of Mass, to the Mass Interdepartmental Permitting Board, probably in June. It would be approved at that level. It will ensure new owners are quickly able to open the building. I think, as everyone knows that works in the private sector or works in a private industry, that speed to market is really important. So when we spoke to Nick and Jumbo Capital, they felt this would be really important to say to a potential new biotech or biogen or Navidea, whoever it is that takes this building over, that we can quickly get them a permit as the host community, get this building up, get it opened, and get it producing for them. The good thing about this, just sharing with town meeting, is this follows existing protocols and procedures within the town. So nothing is done without the review of the Building Commissioner, the Zoning Board, Planning Board, Select Board, CONCOM, et cetera. It follows all existing zoning, follows all existing bylaws, and it follows everything to make sure that the building is up to the specs that we require here in Canton. The one thing we do ask the Zoning Board and the boards we have listed here is that a decision be given to the business within 60 days from the time the building plan is filed with the Building Commissioner. And that can be a yes or no, but we ask that the Zoning Board and the other boards do that, and in speaking to them, they all feel that's very reasonable, and as mentioned, we've had many of these in the past. The current assessment on the building is $17,539,000. The building is currently an empty shell, and they built it that way so that it can be customized with whoever goes in there. The current area is a mix of biotech, technology, manufacturing, and financial. And with the current market demand, we really need to help Jumbo provide as much firepower as we can to go to a potential new owner and say, hey, the town of Canton can turn this building around quicker than Walthing or Burlington or Norwood or Watertown or wherever you want to go. Come to Canton. So we ask for town meeting's support of this warrant article tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's the last slide. So that's it, Mr. Moderator. Thank you.
Thank you. Well done. Do we have any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Article number 16.
Finance, Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves the motion for Article 16 as printed in the warrant.
Do I hear a motion that's been made and seconded? Mr. Chairman, for discussion.
This motion transfers $1 million from free cash, also known as the Undesignated Fund Balance, to the Special Education Reserve Account. This reserve account provides a means to set aside funds to be used to cover unanticipated expenses that exceed the school department's operating budget for required special education expenses. The rev- department's operating budget for required special education expenses. The reserve account may only be used if the school committee and the Select Board each vote to approve the use of these funds.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare the vote unanimous. Article 24. So this is going to be one of our clustered articles. And if I may briefly, it's going to be clustered with Article 25 and 26. So we will dispense with all three articles one in a row. First, I'll go to the Finance Committee, and then I will move on to the Planning Board. Mr. Chairman.
The, Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee defers making a motion to the Planning Board, but supports the Planning Board motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate that. Article 24 is the acceptance of Stillwater as a public way. Article 25 is the accept Dalebrook Court as a private way. Article 26 is accept Foundry Lane as a public way. I have a little bit of reading to do that is required, so bear with me. This is to certify that a public hearing concerning the subject matter of the warrant for the 2025 Annual Town Meeting was held by the Planning Board on March 5, 2025, in the Sala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 801 Washington Street, Canton, Mass., in accordance with the provisions of the Massachusetts General Law 48, as most recently amended to see if the vote to amend Section 9.1 of the zoning bylaw as follows or to take action related thereto. The Planning Board, notice of the subject matter of the public hearing sufficient for identification has been published in the Canton Citizen, a newspaper of general circulation in the town of Canton on February 13 and February 2025, and filed in the office of the Planning Board, the Town Clerk, the Board of Selectmen, and Memorial Hall at a reference desk at the Canton Public Library. On April 16, 2025, the Planning Board, with a vote of three members, voted 3 to 0 to continue this hearing until the work is completed without prejudice, and then this article can be adopted by Town Meeting.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, are you suggesting that you would move the article as being postponed indefinitely?
Correct.
Thank you. So I have a motions been made. Do I have a second? Motion made, second. For any further discussion, Mr. Chairman?
No, thank you.
Is there any further discussion on the article? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. This is a move to postpone indefinitely. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare the vote unanimous. Mr. Chairman, you're on a roll.
I'm on a roll. I've got several to do here, so bear with me. So Article 29, amend the zoning bylaw, Section 11.0. This is to certify that a public hearing concerning the subject matter of the warrant for the 2025 Annual Town Meeting was held by the Planning Board on 2525 at the Sala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 801 Washington Street, Canton, Massachusetts, in accordance with the provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, as most recently amended to see if the town to vote to amend the Section 11.0 of the zoning.
Was that?
Oh, I apologize.
We're moving on to Article 25.
I apologize.
No worries. Wrong cluster.
I don't know what I was doing there.
Thank you. I've got my unofficial deputy moderator down in the audience. He's keeping me honest. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan is one of the best. I had read them anticipating all three were together. Do you want me to read that section again separately?
That's fantastic. So we have a public notice that was presented, printed in the local newspaper, the Canton Citizen. And the Planning Board, on all three of these articles, if I'm not mistaken, is making a positive motion to postpone indefinitely on all three. We voted the first. Can we move on to just voting the next two?
All right.
Is there any discussion that anyone has on either of those two articles before we vote? All right, I'll move the vote on Article 26 to postpone indefinitely. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? We just did 25, didn't we?
It's 24, 25, and 26.
Yes, that's correct. So 26 is postponed indefinitely by unanimous vote. Moving on to Article 25, the notice was rid. The motion was made to postpone indefinitely. Do we have any further discussion on the article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? That is also passed to postpone indefinitely unanimously. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, if I could just make a comment?
Yes, sir.
I can assure every resident that either lives on those streets or every resident in this town, the Planning Board is really looking forward to that getting presented either at Springtown Meeting 2026, or if we have a Fall Town Meeting, we look forward to that getting done.
Great. Thank you. Article number 17.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves the motion for Article 17 as printed in the warrant.
Motion's been made. Do I hear a second? I have a second. Mr. Chairman, hold for a moment. We have a point of order.
Previous, on the previous three articles, we only took two votes, and there were three articles.
Okay, I have it recorded as three votes. Which of the articles do you feel I didn't? I did 24. I inadvertently went to 26, and then I did 25.
All right, stand corrected. Thank you.
I appreciate the check, though. Trust me, it's my first night up here. I sat down there, but I didn't stand up here. So thank you for your assistance. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, Article 17, this motion for Article 17 transfers $1 million from free cash, also known as the Undesignated Fund Balance, into the Capital Stabilization Fund. This reserve account provides a means to set aside funds to be used to help cover future capital projects, such as the Galvin Middle School, which these funds are currently intended for.
All right, we have a motion been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. I'll call the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare the vote unanimous. Article number 11.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves that the subject matter of Article 11 be indefinitely postponed.
Motion's been made. Do I hear a second? Second, Mr. Chairman, for discussion.
There are currently no general laws or session laws enacted by the Commonwealth to be considered by the Town Meeting.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare the vote unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, article number 28. So this, again, is a cluster. We'll beg your indulgence. There's quite a bit that goes into this cluster, but the clustering is for Articles 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, and 35, as they very substantively are all interrelated in more or less housekeeping matters. We'll take them one at a time, though, and we'll start with Mr. We'll go on straight to the Planning Board, Mr. McCarthy. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. I appreciate that. And again, please accept my indulgence of having quite a bit to read this evening. So we make a motion on Article number 28, to amend the zoning bylaw, Section 9.1 of the Flood Plain District, EPOD. This is to certify that a public hearing concerning the subject matter of the warrant for the 2025 Annual Town Meeting was held by the Planning Board on 2525 in the Sala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 801 Washington Street, Canton, Massachusetts, in accordance with the provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, as most recently amended, to see if the vote to amend Section 9.1 of the zoning bylaws as follows or to take any other actions related thereto. The Planning Board, notice of the subject matter for the public hearing sufficient for identification has been published in the Canton Citizen Newspaper, a newspaper of general circulation in the town of Canton on 11625 and 12325, and on file in the office of the Planning Board, the Town Clerk, the Board of Selectmen, at Memorial Hall and at the reference desk of the Canton Public Library. On 2525, the Planning Board, voted by four members, voted 4-0 to send a positive recommendation that this article be adopted by Town Meeting. Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Chairman.
No additional comments. Thank you.
No additional comments. Is there any other discussion on the floor? Hearing none, we'll call, do we have someone coming? We have one. Mr. Porter.
Mark Porter, 633 Chapman Street. I'm just curious, with everything that's going on outside of Canton, is there any way that if other rules change, we have the flexibility with this to not get behind the eight ball?
If you're, well, I'm going to just take that, this specific article, excuse me, is required by the federal FEMA. So it's not anything that we, for lack of a better term, decide to do. It is something that is required in order for residents to get flood insurance.
Does that satisfy your question? Excellent. Hearing no further discussion, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare the vote unanimous. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 29, amend zoning bylaw, Section 11.0. This is to certify that a public hearing concerning the subject matter of the warrant for the 2025 Annual Town Meeting was held on the Planning Board on 25, was held on the Planning Board on 225 in the Sala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 801 Washington Street, Canton, Massachusetts, in accordance with the provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, as most recently amended to see if the vote, the Section 11.0 of the zoning bylaw. Planning Board, notice of the subject matter for the public hearing sufficient for identification has been published in the Canton Citizen and notice of a newspaper of general circulation of the town on 11625 and 12325, and on the file of the office of the Planning Board, the Town Clerk, the Board of Selectmen at Memorial Hall, and at the reference desk at the Canton Public Library. On 2525, the Planning Board, voted by four members and voted 4-0 to send a positive recommendation that this article be adopted by Town Meeting. Make a motion to approve.
Motion's been made. Do I hear a second? Motion's been made, second. Any further discussion, Mr. Chairman?
No, thank you.
Is there any on the floor? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare the vote unanimous and approved.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, Article number 30, amend the Section 3.1.4, the Table of Use Regulations. This is to certify that a public hearing concerning the subject matter of the warrant for the 2025 Annual Town Meeting was held by the Planning Board on February 5, 2025, in the Sala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 801 Washington Street, Canton, Massachusetts, in accordance with the provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, and as most recently amended to see if the town hall vote to amend zoning bylaw, Section 3.1.4, and the zoning bylaws, to see if the vote will amend the zoning bylaw, Section 3.1.4, Table Use of Regulations, with the bold and underlined language indicating changes. Notice of the subject matter for the public hearing sufficient for identification has been published in the Canton Citizen, a newspaper of general circulation of the town on 11625 and 12325, and on file in the office of the Planning Board, the Town Clerk, the Board of Selectmen, at Memorial Hall, and at the reference desk at the Canton Public Library. On 2525, the Planning Board, by a vote of four members, voted 4-0 to send a positive recommendation that this article be adopted by Town Meeting. Motion to approve.
We have a motion that's been made. Do I hear a second? Motion's been made, second. Any further discussion, Mr. Chairman?
No, thank you.
Any further discussion on the floor? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? It's approved. I declare the vote unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 31, amend the zoning law, Section 8.8, mixed use. This is to certify that a public hearing concerning the subject matter of the warrant for the 2025 Annual Town Meeting was held by the Planning Board on 2525 in the Sala Meeting Room, Sala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 801 Washington Street, Canton, Massachusetts, in accordance with the provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, as most recently amended, to see if the town will vote to add zoning bylaw, Section 8.8, mixed use, to the zoning bylaw, or take any other related action related thereto, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw, Section 8.8, mixed use, as follows: One, to promote the public health, safety, and welfare and encouraging active community life; Two, to mitigate traffic congestion by promoting housing proximate to compatible commercial uses; And Three, to enable the creation of livable, walkable neighborhoods in the town's commercial districts; Four, to encourage the continued use of historic village centers; And Five, to promote the creation of affordable and attainable housing. The Planning Board voted, notice of the subject matter for the public hearing sufficient for identification, have been published in the Canton Citizen, a newspaper of general circulation for the town on 11625 and 12325, and on file in the office of the Planning Board, the Town Clerk, the Board of Selectmen, at Memorial Hall, and at the reference desk at the Canton Public Library. On 2525, the Planning Board, by a vote of four members, voted 4-0 to send a positive recommendation that this article be adopted by Town Meeting. Motion to approve.
Motion's been made. Do I hear a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion, Mr. Chairman?
No, thank you.
Any on the floor? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion, anybody opposed? Motion passes, and I declare the vote unanimous. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 32, amend zoning bylaw, Section 10.7 of the Canton Center Design Review. This is to certify that a public hearing concerning the subject matter of the warrant for the 2025 Annual Town Meeting was held by the Planning Board on 2525 in the Sala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 801 Washington Street, Canton, Massachusetts, in accordance with the provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, as most recently amended, to see if the town will vote to amend Section 10.7 of the Canton Center Design Review of the zoning bylaws or to take any action related thereto. The Planning Board, notice of the subject matter for the planning, public hearing sufficient for the identification has been published in the Canton Citizen, a newspaper of general circulation, in the town on 11625 and 12325, and on file in the office of the Planning Board, the Town Clerk, the Board of Selectmen, at Memorial Hall, and at the reference desk at the Canton Public Library. And on 2525, the Planning Board, by a vote of four members, voted 4-0 to send a positive recommendation that this article be adopted by Town Meeting. Motion to approve?
Motion's been made. Do I hear a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Chairman, any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Any discussion on the floor? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare the vote approved unanimously. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 33, amend Article 33, the height exception for the Central Business District. This is to certify that a public hearing concerning the subject matter for the warrant for the 2025 Annual Town Meeting was held by the Planning Board on March 5, 25, in the Sala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 801 Washington Street, Canton, Massachusetts, in accordance with the provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, as most recently amended, to see if the town will vote to add the zoning bylaw, Section 4.3.7, height exception for the Central Business District, or to take any action related thereto. The Planning Board voted, a notice on the subject matter for the public hearing sufficient for identification, has been published in the Canton Citizen, a newspaper of general circulation in the town on 11625, 12325, and on file in the office of the Planning Board, the Town Clerk, the Select Board, at Memorial Hall, and at the reference desk at the Canton Public Library. And on 3525, the Planning Board, by a vote of four members, voted 4-0 to send a positive recommendation of this article to Town Meeting. A motion to approve?
Motion's been made. Do I hear a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Chairman, any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Anyone on the floor? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare it approved. The vote unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article number 34, amend zoning law by Section 9.8, CCEOD. This is to certify that a public hearing concerning the subject matter of the warrant for the 2025 Annual Town Meeting was held by the Planning Board on 2525 at the Sala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 801 Washington Street, Canton, Massachusetts, in accordance with the provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, as most recently amended, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw, Section 9.8, CCEOD of the zoning bylaws, or to take any action related thereto. The Planning Board, notice of the subject matter for the public hearing sufficient for identification has been published in the Canton Citizen, a notice of general circulation in the town on 11625 and 12325, and on file in the office of the Planning Board, the Town Clerk, the Select Board, at Memorial Hall, and at the reference desk at the Canton Public Library. And on 2525, the Planning Board, by a vote of four members, voted 4-0 to send a positive recommendation that this article be adopted by Town Meeting. Motion to approve?
Motion's been made, and do I hear a second? Motion's been made, second. Any further discussion, Mr. Chairman?
No, thank you.
Any discussion on the floor? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. I declare it unanimous. Motion passes, I declare it unanimous. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article thirty-five, amend the zoning, zoning map. This is to certify that a public hearing on the subject matter of the warrant of the twenty twenty-five annual town meeting was held by the planning board on February nineteen twenty twenty-five, in the Sala Meeting, Meeting Room, Town Hall, eight oh one Washington Street, Canton, Massachusetts, in accordance with the provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws, chapter forty-eight, as most recently amended, to see if the town would vote to accept, accept map. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning map of the town of Canton to rezone parcels from respective existence lines to central business district. Notice of the, notice of the subject matter for the public hearing sufficient for identification has been published in the Canton Citizen, a newspaper of general circulation for the town, on one thirty twenty-five and two six twenty-five, and on file in the office of the planning board, the town clerk, the select board, at Memorial Hall, and at the reference desk at the Canton Public Library. And, on February nineteen twenty twenty-five, the planning board, by a vote of two to one, sent a positive recommendation that this article be adopted by town meeting. Motion to approve?
Motion's been made, do I hear a second? Been seconded, any further discussion, Mr. Chairman?
No, thank you.
Any on the floor? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes, I declare it unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman. You did a great job.
Thank you very much, you're done with me, thank you.
Okay, first I'm going to go to the Finance Committee, and then I'm going to go to the project proponent. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves the motion as printed in the warrant.
Motion's been made, do I hear a second? Motion's been made in second, and Mr. Chairman, for discussion?
The Finance Committee supports article twenty-seven by a vote of five to one. This article would authorize the select board to consider developing a, and filing a home rule petition to the state legislature on behalf of the town of Canton to request that it be allowed to move its annual local election that is currently held each April to November. The Finance Committee realizes that there are still many concerns that will need to be addressed as this process progresses, but we believe that this is a discussion worth having.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Lopez?
May I have the slide presentations for you, Louis?
Could you kindly just identify yourself first?
Of course. Lisa Lopez, eighty-seven Chapman Street. And with me this evening as a co-petitioner is Jennifer Wexler, Turnpike Street.
Thank you.
We have just a very short presentation this evening, after which we're happy to take questions. And we ask your support to approve this article, to grant the select board the legal authority to file a home rule petition to change the timing of the local election from springtime to November to be synced with state and federal elections. Now, to be clear, I am not going to review all of the reasons why we think this article is meritorious. We have reviewed this quite a bit at prior town meetings, in the Canton Citizen, in op-eds, in paid advertisement, in letters to the editor, on social media, and Canton cable television. It was a part of the platform of a select board member who won election. Moreover, there were over a thousand visitors to the Canton Move the Vote website with over seven thousand impressions indicating to us that people really did look at the FAQs. Moreover, we had conversations with two thousand three hundred and sixty-nine people who signed the petition to actually put this on the ballot last April eighth. So we think you've heard enough about why we believe that it's in the best interest of the town to move the vote. Next slide, or this slide. The most important thing that I'm going to emphasize tonight is that if there was ever any doubt whatsoever about how Canton voters feel about this proposal, there are some who say that when it was voted in the affirmative ten years ago, the vote was taken too late at night, there were too few people, and it was too close. And there are those who say when the vote was taken in November of two thousand twenty-three, it was a very late at night, confused, distracted discussion, and there was actually no hand vote taken. Well, there can be no ambiguity whatsoever. Thousands of people voted just last month. The vote was essentially two to one, and so it's our position, there can be no doubt but that Canton voters want this government reform to be implemented. Next slide. To be clear, this is not a Canton invention, and it's not recent. For many, many decades, there have been scholars, political scientists, social scientists, government reformers, good government reformers, who have argued that syncing local elections with state and federal elections in November is the single most effective, good government reform that can significantly increase voter turnout, and we believe improve voter engagement in local elections. And, I mean, I could have four slides up here, there are so many, but I didn't want to bore the town meeting. There are by now hundreds of cities and towns around the United States that have already implemented this change. Some states, such as Oregon, as a matter of state law, require that local elections are synced with state and federal elections in November. Other states, including Arizona, California, Michigan, Florida, Colorado, Maryland, make it optional for cities and towns to opt in according to their particular procedures. The point is, this is not new. It has been tried, it's effective, it works. Next slide. It is true that in the particular form that we are recommending, it would be new to Massachusetts, but there are thought leaders in Massachusetts already making this proposal. Indeed, this was a Boston Globe article dated from November of two thousand twenty-four that have made this proposal. This is really a good government reform sweeping the country. Last slide. We do believe that the select board will do the right thing and honor the will of Canton voters to implement this reform, but as a legal requirement, the home rule petition that must be filed by the select board, and a home rule petition is merely the nomenclature for a bill that is filed with the state legislature to give Canton permission to make this change, in order for the select board to do that, it must have the legal authority by town meeting. And so that's what we're asking for tonight. Now, you may ask, what happens next if town meeting does vote this legal authority? And I'm going to ask Jennifer Wexler in a closing remark to answer that question.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Moderator, Jennifer Wexler, one eighty-two Turnpike Street. Thank you, Lisa. You'll notice that even if this town meeting gives the select board authority to act, there is no requirement that the select board act within a certain period of time. The petitioners, we have already met with our Senator Feeney several times now, who honoring the will of the Canton voters on April eighth, has committed and recommitted to sponsor and shepherd this home rule petition legislation. Our senator is now having his lawyers begin to craft a draft bill tailored to the needs of Canton, that the petitioners will then present and can present to the select board for your consideration. Though it would be totally up to the select board, we hope and expect that the select board would appoint a working group of stakeholders, including, for example, in addition to the petitioners, the town clerk or her designee, one or more poll workers who really understand election operations, town council, a representative of the bylaw modernization committee, and perhaps others, whose purpose would be to collaborate not only on the final version of the home rule petition to be submitted to the legislature, but also on the operational needs of such a change so that they could be anticipated and addressed. So, to be clear, the vote on April eighth and tonight's vote are not the end of this process of reform, they're the beginning. But to state the obvious, without the beginning, we don't have a chance at reaching the finish line. So, in sum, a yes vote on article twenty-seven authorizes the select board to file a home rule petition to simply carry out the will of the voters, the crucial next step to increase participation in our local elections. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Kenny.
Thank you, Tracy Kenny, town clerk. I should apologize in advance, I do not have Mr. McCarthy's skill at speed reading.[1282.32][1282.32][applause] Thank you, sorry about that. I do have some comments I'd like to make. There are three hundred and fifty-one communities in Massachusetts, currently fifty-five communities, mostly cities or towns with a city form of government, conduct municipal elections biennially in November in odd numbered years. State elections are held biennially in November in even numbered years. There are two hundred and ninety-six Massachusetts communities, including Canton, that conduct municipal elections annually in the spring between the months of March and June. That is, eighty-four percent of Massachusetts communities are conducting their elections, their local elections, in the spring. Conducting our town election in odd years in November would be similar to conducting the election in April, however, as the state does not currently allow local offices to appear on state ballots, conducting a local election in an even year would require that we conduct the state and local elections as two separate elections running concurrently, each with its own ballot and separate check-in lists for voters. Canton has never held a dual election, and no community holds dual elections on a permanent basis or has ever held a dual election with a presidential election. However, there are communities that have conducted dual elections on an as-needed basis, such as to fund needed repairs on a municipal building, or to fill an unexpected vacancy on an elected board. In that scenario, the town ballot would typically contain one question or one office, not a slate of offices, which would translate into longer lines on Election Day and during early voting. Of the fifty-five communities currently holding their local elections in November, two are area communities that previously held their elections in April. In approximately two thousand and nine, both Braintree and Randolph changed their form of government and moved their town elections, which had been conducted annually in April, to biennially in odd years in November. The Braintree town clerk has stated that election results fluctuate depending on what is on the ballot, typically seeing a higher voter turnout when the position of mayor appears on the ballot. Their two most recent elections produced a thirty-two percent voter turnout with the position of mayor on the ballot, nineteen percent when mayor was not on the ballot. Since changing their local election biennially in November, Randolph's voter turnout has ranged from a high of twenty-two percent to a low of eleven, a slight decline overall compared to their voter participation in April, according to the Randolph town clerk. Since vote by mail and early voting were made available for local elections in two thousand twenty-three, Canton has seen an increase in voter participation. Canton's most recent annual town elections produced a twenty-seven percent turnout and a thirty-three percent turnout, higher than several other communities that hold local elections in November, such as Boston, Framingham, Quincy, Springfield, and Weymouth, to name a few. There are potential issues. As I mentioned earlier, the state does not allow local offices to appear on the state ballot, and as such, election laws differ between state and local elections, which will cause voter confusion. For example, residency requirements differ for state and local elections. If a Canton voter moves to another Massachusetts community within six months of a state election and doesn't register in the new community by law, they can come back to Canton and vote in the state election from their Canton address. That law does not apply to local elections, however. Another issue, although vote by mail is offered for both state and local elections, the deadline to return ballots through the mail differs. All vote by mail ballots for the local election must be received in the clerk's office by the close of polls on Election Day. Ballots returned by mail in a state election can be received up to three days after the election. On the subject of vote by mail, conducting vote by mail for two elections at the same time gets more complicated. Voters are provided separate, clearly marked affirmation envelopes for each ballot, and a voter must return the ballot in each envelope, in, for each election in the corresponding envelope. If a voter returns a ballot placed in the wrong envelope, or places two ballots in the same envelope, the ballot or ballots must be rejected, essentially disenfranchising the voter. And this has been an issue when conducting other, conducting dual elections, I've heard from other clerks. The petitioners have stated that they would like to see both state and local offices appearing on the same ballot. For anyone who has voted in a state election in recent years, you may recall that the ballot contains both offices and referendum questions, which usually take up the majority of both sides of the ballot. If you were to include all of Canton's municipal offices, it may require a two-page ballot. There are additional costs associated with moving the election, the need for additional poll workers. Dual elections would result in a much longer day, and salaries would have to be paid at overtime rates. Voting lists are contained on computer tablets now, we would need to purchase additional computer tablets. State elections typically produce a higher voter turnout than local elections, we would have to print more ballots for the town election for Election Day, and vote by mail in anticipation of a greater volume of requests. And we would also need additional funding for postage to cover the cost of mailing these ballots. Finally, as was mentioned by the proponent, this change was first proposed eleven years ago, and a home rule petition was sent to the legislature. The legislature did not approve the change, and in the decades since, not one of the two hundred and ninety-five other Massachusetts communities conducting elections in the spring has made this change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kenny.[1700.12][1700.12][applause] I'll move down to the front, Ms. Harrington?
Thank you. I rise in support of this article.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, would you just identify yourself first?
Susan Harrington, forty-five Spruce Lane.
It's a technicality.
Gotcha. I rise in support of this article. I do appreciate the logistical challenges that have been raised, and they are legitimate concerns. The petitioners are, as well as Senator Feeney, are fully committed to shepherding this through the process and creating something we can all live with. This is, no one's in a rush here to do this fast, we want to do it right. As far as the information that was cited, it's anecdotal, and there's a lot of scientific research that supports the notion that a fall election will increase voter turnout, and that simply makes democracy stronger. So even if it's harder, it's the right thing to do. The petitioners also are committed to marshaling the resources needed to make Election Day run smoothly here in Canton, whether that's more poll workers, whatever is needed, they are committed to that. And I am among the people who froze our butts off all winter getting two thousand three hundred and sixty-nine signatures. Thank you.
Thank you.[1787.04][1787.04][applause] Ms. Mangan?
Mayor Jane Mangan, twenty-six Angela Street. I have some questions about the process. I have some questions about the process. I thought that that was going to be addressed tonight, but I've heard a lot of misstatements in the people who've been supporting it. I've been hearing many towns already are doing this, which is, my understanding, zero towns are doing this. The only towns that have switched over have had to incorporate as a city and now have a mayor that is a paid position, which we have a select board that's basically minimally paid, $3,200 a year. I wanted to know if all the people who ran for election for these three-year terms, are they going to work now for three years and five months, or are they going to be working a short term for the transition? Because these people are already elected, they've gone for the term, and will they be, you know, they'll have to give up time or put in extra time, and I don't know if that's been thought out either.
If we could, maybe you could just do your list of questions, and then we'll go to the proponent to have them answer.
Okay. And then, I just lost, I'm sorry, I lost my last point. Sorry, I guess I'll just stop there.
Okay. So I think if I answered your question correctly after your statement was, would this include some alteration of elected terms for local offices, either shortening them or lengthening them to be able to get to the November fall election, I think? Is that correct? Yes. Ms. Lopez?
Yes, two clarifications in response to a prior speaker and then a direct response to the most recent speaker. The town clerk identified a number of towns in Massachusetts who have moved to November elections, and they didn't see a significant increase in voter turnout. That's because they were odd-year November, during which there are no state and federal elections. It is true that there is no city or town in Massachusetts yet that sinks its local elections in November. Our plan to submit a home rule petition that asks the legislature for permission to add our local candidates to the state and federal ballot during, for example, you may remember, in this most recent presidential election, we also voted for local candidates for the Blue Hill Regional School Board. So there is some accommodation for local candidates on state and federal elections. We would include that in our home rule petition and ask for that change. If, for whatever reason, that were denied, it is true, this would be a dual-ballot election, which, as I've said, has been run successfully on an ad hoc basis by quite a number of other Massachusetts cities and towns. Lastly, in response to the most recent speaker, it is true, there would have to be a very prescriptive transition written into the home rule petition. You may remember, maybe 10 years ago, when our select board went from three to five members, we had to be very prescriptive about how we would feather in those additional members, number four and five, for that one time only. In this same case, we would look to the experience of all of those other cities and towns across the nation that have made this change, and be very clear about how it would affect those serving incumbents whose terms would otherwise expire in the spring but would be affected by a one-time change to a November election. And so that would be covered in the home rule petition, very prescriptive transition, so that the town would know exactly how that was going to impact all of the incumbents.
Great, thank you. I'll go to Ms. Kenny, I think you're probably seeking to also clarify or amplify.
Just very quickly, just to reiterate, different states have different election laws, and also, the previous speaker referenced Blue Hills Regional School as a comparison. Yes, Blue Hills Regional School is a school located in Canton, however, it is not a town school. It is not governed by the town of Canton. It is a regional school, it has a regional school committee made up of nine members, each member elected from the town, from each town that the Blue Hills Regional serves. The elected members, you cannot put a candidate from Avon or Milton or Randolph on the town of Canton ballot. That is why Blue Hills Regional is on the state ballot. It is a regional committee which serves multiple communities. It is elected on the November ballot, everyone voting on the same day. If you put it on the town ballot, all nine communities have their elections on different dates, so that's why it's on the November ballot.
Thank you. Move over to this microphone.
Hello, Tricia Florence, 24 Tittlebrook Road. Thank you to everyone who's spoken so far. It's clear there are strong, valid arguments on both sides of this issue, but I move to vote, because I think that we've heard them.
I appreciate it, but I think procedurally, I can't allow you to stand and make a statement and then move the vote. It's one or the other, as a matter of protocol.
Oh, no, did I mess it up?
Oh, so you're not moving the question? You're just saying you want to move the elections?
No, no, no. I move to vote on this Article 27 right here tonight.
Okay. I think as a matter of-
I am not in support or, I am not standing in support or denial.
You're trying to say move the question?
Yes, I am trying to say move the question. Thank you, Chapman Street.
Thank you. Let me just, if I may, let me confer with counsel. I think if you stand and make a statement and then make the motion to move, I think you can't do both in the same effort.
Did I mess it up? Bummer.
Mr. Durensis is going to assist me for a minute. I just want to make sure that I don't flub this, so if you could just give me a moment. I'm sorry, ma'am, my assessment was correct, you can't speak and then move the question. You would have to just-
I'm glad you're right.
Well, I'm glad that I didn't flub this one, so.
Karen?
Yes, sir.
My name is Karen, 4 Newell Hagan Court, Department H, Canton, Mass. I move the question.
All right.
9 Cynthia Road. I was standing at the microphone before.
Okay. How about this? I'll choose who speaks in what order, okay? So, let's do this. Thank you, so you're withdrawing your motion at the moment, correct? Thank you. So I had two folks at the microphone, I'd like to let the two of them speak, and then I'll go to you, Mr. Karen, okay?
Peg Mead, 9 Cynthia Road. I move in opposition to this motion, and I just want to clarify, I'm an elected member of the Library Board of Trustees. I was elected at the recent election. I am also a poll worker, not at the recent election, but in other elections for the town. My main concern is that if we move the election to November, it's bound to become partisan. And one of the beauties of our town election is that people do not identify themselves as Democrat or Republican, and I think that's really important for the town. I think that if we go to a November election, it's going to further draw lines that we don't need in this town. Thank you.
Thank you for your points, appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Porter?
Mark Porter, 633 Chapman Street. For those that don't know, I served six years on the Finance Committee, six years on the Select Board. I do stand against adoption of this article, the same way I stood against it a decade or so ago, and that's awkward for me to say, because I have a great deal of respect for the proponents, and I find myself agreeing with them far more often than I disagree. But today, I do disagree. I've disagreed for a while. I didn't take a position earlier because of my work with Canton Voter Forum. We all agreed to stay out of it and just try to provide information. But to me, this comes down to an uncomfortable truth, something that I think a lot of us don't want to acknowledge, just the fact that most people in this town do not care about local elections. We've had two of the most consequential, emotional, involved, local elections over the last two years, and 9,000-plus people still chose not to show up for those elections, despite, and I know it's none of you, you're here on a, what is this, a Monday night? You're here on a Monday night to listen to this stuff. 9,000 people that showed up for a presidential election, despite how important these last few local elections were, chose not to come. Did they know about it? Probably. I got plenty of postcards, plenty on social media, I got a call from the town, the advertising is great. We have vote early, we have mail-in, we have so many ways that people can vote if they choose to. They're just, they're not choosing to. And I have three major concerns about why this is a bad idea. Number one, I think that if we move the election, it favors affluent candidates. If you have to suddenly reach a lot more people, that costs a lot more money to reach those people. If you're buying ad space, when people are buying presidential ad space, when people are buying state ad space, those impressions, those costs are going to be higher. If you have a lot of money coming into this, you have a built-in advantage, and that advantage is amplified if you only need to get name recognition. Number two, I am someone that believes in implicit bias. I'm someone that believes that we all, whether we want to admit it or not, have certain things built in in the way that we see and interpret the world. I have an Irish last name. I think in this town, having an Irish last name, if people are just showing up and don't necessarily know who they're voting for, is an advantage. That's an implicit bias. As a previous speaker said, I think that this can make things more partisan. If you have the support of one of the two town committees, now all of a sudden, they're mobilized for those larger elections, they're going to mobilize for you. I know that there's been talk, there's been concern about handshake agreements in this town. This is something that will further handshake agreements in the town, because if you are someone that is highly-aligned partisan versus someone that's independent, someone that's unenrolled, you're not going to get that support. So those are things that concern me. I want people to be involved. That's why I'm involved in the Canton Voter Page to get that information out. But I don't want to mistake more people pulling a lever with a higher-quality election. It's the candidates' jobs to get people to come out. It's not our jobs to hand people a ballot that they're not expecting, it's the candidates' jobs to get people to come out. In the last two elections, as we heard, relative to other towns, the candidates did a great job. I think that we need to continue putting the onus on the candidates to get people to come out, not just simply move the election. Thank you.
Mr. Karen, I ask, I know I said I was going to go to you next, I ask if, out of respect, you'd defer to the Select Board. Thank you.
Trish Boydin, 26 Farm Street. I stand in support of Article 27. Regarding the timing or whatever, the November election, something Mark just said about it being elitist, when I was collecting signatures for this article, so many people were saying it's an absolute no-brainer, it's one less thing I have to think about, I get a half-day off to vote in November. And just talking with a colleague tonight on the Select Board, he was saying how he was at his son's lax game, and how the softball field was full, the baseball field was full, the whole point is, it was a crazy time, November. Like I said, when I was collecting signatures, people were grateful to be signing that petition. And it was just, and it's a time when people think of elections. Anyway, Article 27.
Thank you. Mr. Karen, it appears you're yielding. Are you yielding so that we can take a few more speakers? If I may, before we do, I had another gentleman that was already waiting at the microphone.
Victor Del Vecchio, 87 Chapman Street, and congratulations, Mr. Salvatore.
Thank you.
I, like a prior speaker, was on the Select Board as well, and I've now spent 40 years, either in appointed or in elected positions, and I was probably the lone Select Board member in 2014 that voted and argued in favor of this change 11 years ago. So I'm not new to this. I'm not doing this because my wife has been supportive of this. I'm doing this because I believe it to be in our interest to do it. I don't buy the argument that people are just disinterested in a local election. I think that their lives are so hectic, they prioritize, and for them, a national electorate is simply more important. If we could tie the two together, we can and we will increase voter turnout. I've heard the arguments now as I've heard them 11 years ago, we don't have the resources. And back then, honestly, we weren't even paying our poll workers up to state wages, as I recall, because I know we approved increasing it at the time. We need to pay our poll workers more. We need to get a younger demographic. Let me be quite honest, and I'm 71, so I can say that, I think with some integrity. We need to approach more people to come do this. That's not a reason for saying, let's not have greater turnout. And I'm also surprised on the issue of partisanship. It's not a question of, there's partisanship now in our country. It's not going to get better or worse, we're divided on a variety of lines in this community. We need more people coming out and weighing in on what matters to the local governance of this community, period. That in itself will be a betterment, period. I think the protestations are far too great. I don't accept them, I ask you to support on this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Del Vecchio. Mrs. McHugo?
Hi, Gail McHugo, 624 Chapman Street, Assistant Town Clerk. For the past 26 years, I can tell you, I have taken part in 73 elections in this town. Your town clerk has taken place and conducted 104 elections. It is a tremendous undertaking. It is like planning a wedding. So much goes into planning elections that starts months and months in advance. Voter participation is very important. It's very important to myself, the town clerk, and I'm sure everyone in this room. We all want to see higher voter turnout. I agree with the prior speaker, who said that it is up to the candidates to get the voters out to vote. I can't agree with that more. However, changing the election to be in November, I can tell you that during in-person early voting, I cannot tell you how many times voters ask, do I have to vote the whole ballot? Oh my God. No, it's your ballot, do what you want with it. Most people who come out to vote in November are interested in voting for president. I personally am thrilled that our town election stands alone, on its own, and people who are registered to vote and are interested in voting are taking the time to vote in person, by mail, or on Election Day. You have so many options to vote, it is increasing voter turnout. Coming out in November, muscle memory, whatever you want to call it, where's that muscle memory in March, when we're voting for a presidential primary? Where's that muscle memory in September, when we're voting for September primary candidates? Muscle memory in November is like this, hi, where do I vote on Election Day? I haven't voted in four years. People who come out and vote in November are interested in voting president. If you're going to ask them to vote for the town election as well, most of them are going to take that ballot, and by the time they get to the town candidates, you're going to find many blanks. You see it with the Blue Hills Regional, blanks, 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 blanks. County Commissioner, people don't know what these offices are, they vote blank. Why? Because they're not interested. They're interested in president, and in November, they're not going to be as interested in voting for the town election. So I vote opposed to this article, and I hope the body does too. And let the town clerk's record and my record tell you that we have done every election for decades, and this would be a disaster. Thank you.
Thank you. The questions have been previously moved, it feels respectfully that we're getting a little repetitive, so do we have anything new to add? I've got folks that have been at the microphone longer. Mr. Karen continues to yield, so go ahead, ahead.
Hi, my name is Julie Beckham, 40 Kenny Street. I just, every argument is very compelling, and it's easy to think whatever the last person said is the right one in this scenario, because everyone is very articulate. What I want to emphasize is that we voted two to one. I just, every argument is very compelling, and it's easy to think whatever the last person said is the right one in this scenario, because everyone is very articulate. What I want to emphasize is that we voted two to one to get this passed. And I also want to emphasize that there are several very difficult, lengthy steps in order to get this passed. If anyone has ever advocated for anything in the Massachusetts State House, you know it takes a long time. So it really behooves us to just vote yes right now, to move this to the next step, and see where it takes us, because this isn't going to happen overnight, and there are going to be very many checks and balances along the way to make sure if it does happen, it happens effectively. So I recommend that everybody vote yes to just move this to the next step.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator, David Marigan, 2356 Washington Street. I move the question.
Thank you. Question's been moved. That will close the debate. Sorry for those that are waiting. Mr. Karen, I'm sorry you didn't have the option to do that, but thank you. And we appreciate you giving them the opportunity. So the motion has been made, the motion's been seconded. I will call the vote. Does anyone, with that being the case, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
All right, let's, by a show of cards, please. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Okay, thank you. Those opposed, please raise your cards. If I may, err on the side of caution, those in favor, please raise your cards again. Those opposed? I think I'm going to have to go to a count. I'm sorry, I think it's too close, and I think it's too important.
Would the following individuals please report to the stage to act as town meeting tellers? Let's see, Agnes Hagan, Gail McHugo, Ellen Jones, Patrice Westner, Peg Mead, Mary Jane Mangan, Tim Megan, and Karen Murphy.
So we have to do a double count, correct?
Yes.
Two people to a section.
Okay, so we've got eight people, so what am I dividing them into?
So it's two up here, two down.
Okay.
Excuse me, could I just ask that we close the doors? They all in place? Okay, so we're going to do the yes vote first. Could I please ask everybody who is voting yes to raise your cards, please? Please keep them up. I know it's going to take a minute. We're going to be doing a double count, so please keep your card raised and visible. This is a yes vote in favor of the article. If, when the counters are done, if you could come forward, and I'll allow people to lower their hands when I know the section is done. Which sections are done? Okay, the front tables, and the front tables only, you can put your arms down. You're welcome. Okay, I think this section is done counted, is that correct? You can put your hands down. I think the middle section is done counted, you can put your hands down. You're going to recount the middle section. We're going to recount the middle section, so those in favor, please raise your cards again. You have my permission to change arms if you'd like. Left section, we were off on our count. Can you raise yeses, raise your cards again, please? Are we all set on the right, on my right? You guys can put your cards down for the moment? Are we good in the center? Is anyone still counting the center?
This is the right section.
Okay, the center, I think you put your arms down. Okay, now the no votes. If the no votes, please raise your cards. Please raise your cards, so they're easy to be seen. Ready to go? Okay, now the no votes. If the no votes, please raise your cards. Please raise your cards, so they're easy to be seen. Can I ask everyone in the center section to please hold your cards up, because some of the counters are seeing some of them are low, and they're trying to get an accurate count? No votes, please raise your cards up high in the center section. Okay, folks, in the center section, the center section only, we continue to have a difference of a count, so I, myself, from here, can see some people are holding cards down like this, like this. Please, if you want them counted as a no vote, raise them up high, so we can get an accurate count. Thank you. I already did it.
Oh, you did?
I have one on my phone. Thanks. But I did, I did it with my head first, and I was right. I verified it, just to make sure.
Gail just told me there was 278 voters that checked in.
Ladies and gentlemen, if I may, if we could come to order, I have the vote. By a total vote of 150 votes in favor, 118 votes opposed, the article passes. Okay, we're moving on to Article 19. And just to let you folks know, this is another cluster article that we have. Article 19 is clustered with Article 12. Was it something I said? Okay, 19 and 12 are clustered, we're going to go with Article 19 first. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves the motion for Article 19 as printed in the warrant.
Excellent. We have a motion been made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Mr. Chairman? Okay, folks, in the center section, the center section only. We continue to have a difference of account. So, I, myself, from here, can see some people are holding cards down like this, like this. Please, if you want them counted as a no vote, raise them up high, so we can get an accurate count. Thank you. I already did it.
Oh, you did?
I have one on my phone. But I did, I did, I did it with my head first, and I was right.
Oh, alright.
I verified it, just to make sure.
Um, Gail just told me there was, um, two hundred and seventy-eight, um, voters that checked in.
Okay? Okay, put your hands down, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, if I may, if we come to order. I have the vote, um, by a total vote of a hundred and fifty votes in favor, a hundred and eighteen votes opposed. The article passes. Okay, we're moving on to Article nineteen. And just to let you folks know, this is another cluster article that we have. Article nineteen is clustered with Article twelve. Was it something I said? Okay, nineteen and twelve are clustered, we're gonna go with Article nineteen first. Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves the motion for Article nineteen as printed in the warrant.
Excellent. We have a motion been made, do I hear it second? Motion's been made in second. Mr. Chairman, fork, uh, discussion.
This motion transfers six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from free cash undesignated fund balance, uh, that might have otherwise been used for supplemental funds for roadways, for the purpose of constructing pickleball courts at Pequitside Farm. Uh, while one member of the Finance Committee did express concerns about previously awarded funds for this project that were returned in CPA and the anticipated cost of the project, the Finance Committee supports the use of free cash to build these pickleball courts. Uh, these courts will add cultural value to the Pequitside Farm by increasing the number of recreational activities available to residents in Canton and is in a location that stakeholders have agreed to, in, in many cases.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Chair of the Board of, of the Select Board, Mr. Lockren.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Lockren, two fifty-eight Norfolk Street, uh, current Chair of the Select Board. Um, so I have a brief presentation, uh, on Article nineteen. Alright, so the what? The town is looking to install six pickleball courts at Pequitside Farm. This pickleball project has been discussed since twenty twenty. The original project was in the location of the old tennis court, which was extremely close to neighbors and was only for two pickleball courts. The cost at the time was over eighty thousand dollars per court. After more thought and consideration for the noise, this project was temporarily shelved and the money was returned to community preservation. We've given careful consideration, uh, to reduce the impact on neighbors. We are asking for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from free cash, uh, which is approximately a hundred and ten thousand per court. Our town engineer has designed the courts and estimated the cost of the project. There is an eighty-seven thousand dollar contingency built into this cost, and the courts will be ADA accessible. We are also working with the developer of Paul Revere Heritage Site to help provide fill to assist in leveling the location and further reducing the cost. Uh, next slide, please. The why. Pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the U.S. for four years in a row. Canton currently does not have any courts dedicated to pickleball, unlike our neighboring towns. Pickleballers are currently playing on CHS tennis courts, thanks to the cooperation of the Canton Public Schools, but the location is not ideal and pickleballers need to work around CHS sports schedules. The sport is played by all generations, and this is a chance to build something in Canton that will be used by many. Next slide, please. This is the where. So, uh, there is a black square, uh, on that aerial view, and that is the location of where we intend to put this. Next slide, please. Uh, these are some pictures that I took of how the land looks currently. Uh, where we are looking to put this does not impact sledding, uh, the playground, the soccer fields, the community garden, or the little red house. Next slide, please. This is a crude drawing of what the pickleball courts would look like, uh, as well as the proximity to the property lines. So, uh, as the pickleball courts are currently drawn, it is about three hundred and fifteen feet to the nearest property line and about four hundred and fifty feet to the nearest structure. There is a little wiggle room to move the courts a little further away, but until we start the project, uh, we won't know, but we are not planning on going any closer. Uh, next slide, please. The pickleball court project has been working with and has been supported by many, including Canton Parks and Recreation, the Department of Elder and Human Services, the Canton Select Board and Town Administrator, Town Engineering, our Conservation Agent, the CHS Pickleball Program, the GMS Pickleball Program, and Canton's Pickleball Leadership Team. Next slide, please. So to address some of the concerns. First of all, location. Much thought was given to where this was located for both access and minimal impact on neighbors. Other locations such as Saint Gerard's and the Senior Center would be significantly closer to neighbors. As mentioned, this project has been in the works since twenty twenty. We have looked at multiple locations. Although the planned location is not completely level and some of the cost is to level this, this location, it was agreed that this location was the ideal spot. The noise. Pickleball is estimated to be around sixty decibels from three hundred feet away, which is listed as slightly louder than normal conversation. To help mitigate that, we are going to install eight-foot-high fences instead of the six-foot-high fences that are normally recommended, and we will be using a wrap around the fences, uh, that is specifically designed to dampen the sound of pickleball. I stand in support of Article nineteen, and I hope you will as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see we have quite a few folks that have stood to speak. I'd like to go in turn, but respectfully, to the extent we can try not to be repetitive, if you have something that a previous speaker said that you agree with, if you could simply just rise and say you agree with the previous speaker, that'd be great. We'll start here and work our way over. Sir.
My name is John Schleicher. I live on fifty Highland Street. I rise to speak in favor of constructing six permanent pickleball courts at the Pequitside location. I've lived in town for forty-six years. I'm married to a longtime Canton resident, Donna DSO Schleicher. I've, have four children who all proudly attended and graduated from the Canton Public School System. I've always supported the projects and events that I felt lent themselves to making the town of Canton a wonderful place for my family to call home. Always supporting so many projects that have and will continue to make Canton a desirable location and home for families. Projects over the years that I've supported include the conversion of the Knights of Columbus to the new Senior Center, the new town pool, the library restoration project, the Galvin Middle School rebuilding project, and the Saint Gerard's purchase. While many of these initiatives did not directly benefit me personally, they have and will continue to benefit the town, making Canton a top-notch desirable community. Now is the time I ask you, my fellow Canton residents, for your support of Canton Pickleball. Yes, this project will indeed affect me personally, as I am one of a rapidly growing number of members who are currently on Canton's pickleball roster. Our ages range from eighteen to eighty-plus years. But this project is not just about me now. It will affect so many of our residents, young and old, for years to come. After all, pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the country for all generations, not just for the old farts like me. Even Canton's own Canton Cooperative Bank recognizes pickleball as an up-and-coming sport. By opening a checking account, they will give you a free Level Up pickleball set. The time is long overdue to have dedicated pickleball courts in town. We will then join many of our neighboring towns in having dedicated courts. Norwood, Sharon, Randolph, Eastern, Braintree, Quincy, Walpole, Foxborough, and Needham, and I probably missed a few others. I am one of fourteen leaders of Canton Pickleball. We are led by Pete Mashaka, who along with his wife Gail, were instrumental in bringing pickleball to Canton way back in two thousand and seventeen. Pete continues to lead the way in ensuring that Canton Pickleball is played safely in a fun and non-threatening environment, where everyone that plays can and will have an exciting time in a truly welcoming atmosphere, while maybe even getting a little bit of exercise. In two thousand and seventeen, under the leadership of both Pete and Diane Tynan, our wonderful Director of the Department of Elder and Human Services, the Papas Rehab Hospital for Children opened up their gymnasium each Friday morning for players to use. On opening day, twenty-four people showed up to learn and play. From that day forward, pickleball has been a remarkable success in Canton, initially enjoyed by many seniors. However, now, pickleball is becoming extremely popular with all generations, with the younger generation representing the largest-growing segment. It is the future. In July of two thousand and eighteen, the school committee, together with the Canton Select Board, permitted us to use one of the five high school tennis courts for pickleball. Initially, one tennis court was modified to be used as a pickleball court. This was done and funded by the DEHS. Three years later, due to pickleball's rapid growth and popularity, we are able to add three more pickleball courts onto this one tennis court. We continue to play on this one tennis court today. What's wrong with continuing in our current situation, you may ask? First of all, we're growing and we need more courts. We are also at the mercy of Canton High School for using the tennis courts for pickleball. While the high school has been most generous for allowing us to use the tennis court, we have been very restricted by the lack of availability of pickleball use during cer- during certain times of the year. For example, during the high school tennis season, which are in the middle of now, from March to the end of May, the courts are off limits to us from two thirty to six P.M. In addition, from September to June, when school is in session, there are many occasions when the phys ed or wellness class are using the courts. The town recreation department offers tennis, tennis lessons, which has restricted our use on several Saturday mornings and some afternoons as well. Also, every time we play pickleball, we have to unlock a storage box, gather the equipment, take out our equipment, and install the portable net so that we can play. Only the team leaders have the combination of the storage unit. By doing this, we are able to ensure the integrity of the system. The problem with this is that playing time is limited by the availability of a team leader. Having permanent nets on permanent courts as proposed will eliminate this restriction and open up times to everyone and every, anyone and everyone to play at a time that is convenient to them. It would no longer be necessary for a team leader to be present. A couple of other pickleball notes of interest. This past New Year's Day, twenty-six members showed up to play. Last month, seventeen new members signed up and joined our pickleball group. Last year, in two thousand and twenty-four, there were two hundred and forty-eight days of scheduled pickleball play recorded. We play in chilly weather, hot weather, windy weather. In two thousand and twenty-four, we played pickleball outdoors at the high school all twelve months of the year. The only thing that prevents us from playing is wet and/or snowy conditions. Pickleball in Canton is definitely not a three- or four-month summer sport. Pickleball is intergenerational. Anyone at any age can play against anyone else at any age and be competitive. Pickleball also brings revenue to the town. Whether it's a trip to a local donut or coffee shop after a morning session or a quick bite to eat or drink at one of our local casual or fine dining restaurants, we enjoy the opportunity to celebrate our victories or replay our defeat. We are a social group that really welcomes others. We actually like one another. We have finally found a home at Pequitside. For the past five years, other sites have been proposed or considered. Each previous consideration had restrictions, roadblocks, or drawbacks. These areas looked at include Ball of a Pawn, the front side of Pequitside, the Saint Gerard's property. The number-one drawback in determining the ideal location for pickleball courts is the noise factor. Playing pickleball, the game does not belong in the neighborhood. It's noisy. You don't want to live near a pickleball court. The noise factor's been all over the news in nearby cities and towns. Some of these areas include Braintree, Wellesley, and Falmouth. You've heard of all. The location we are seeking at Pequitside is far enough from any neighborhood. It will not affect the soccer fields, the kids' playground at Pequitside, the community garden, the annual Easter egg hunt, or anything else that takes place at Pequitside. Yes, it will take fill to level the area, but I do believe that a local developer has offered to help with this issue. The site will be ADA compliant. There is parking with several lots on site. There are portable restaurant, uh, restrooms on site. We have the support of the Select Board and the overwhelming support of the Finance Committee. We have finally found an ideal location for a sport that is growing in popularity within all age groups. We have the support, we have the interest from all age groups. The time is now for Canton Pickleball. We need a permanent home. Please vote yes. Thanks for listening and for your support.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Please. Ma'am.
Mr. Moderator, my name is Karen Erickson, and I live at twelve Sumner Street, which abuts the Pequitside property, a property that my, has been in my family since nineteen fifty-six. I rise in objection to the approval of monies toward pickleball courts at Pequitside for four reasons. Insufficient detail about the location prior to seeing a map tonight, destruction of the natural environment, noise pollution to the current users of the property, and abutters, and other financial needs in the town. How can a town vote for the monies on this project without the full knowledge of the impact to the property? Unlike with the dog parks for the Paul Revere Heritage Site, when there were no less than three maps afforded to the town and the Canton citizen, no site delineation has been published on this pickleball project, or public meetings advertised for general public input, and from people who utilize the property now. I've never seen this project appear as an agenda item for the Select Board, and I know it hasn't gone before the Planning Board. This is conservation property, and it hasn't gone before the Conservation Commission. Describing the project as near the community gardens and the playground is not transparency and doesn't come close to describing the intrusive nature of the project. One has to go to the town engineer to see the site plan. According to the town engineer, this project requires the removal of scrub brush, flora and fauna, truckloads of dirt to be hauled in to level the area, and a retaining wall built. I asked the engineer specifically if soundproofing would be included around the fencing, and his answer was no. Remarkably, the courts would be adjacent to the peaceful walking trails and the picnic area of Pequitside. The Environmental Protection Agency reports that anything above fifty-five decibels can be an annoyance that would interfere with daily activities. According to consultants on the noise produced by pickleball play, the average hit of a pickleball paddle against the ball is seventy decibels. This is louder than tennis and city noise. It is in the mid-range of our hearing, to which our hearing is most attuned to. This pickleball play would not be within the fifty-five-decibel threshold for the picnic area, the walking trails, the playground, and the twenty-seven gardening plots, a peaceful pastime for which they have the privilege by renting their plots. Another complaint that surprised the consultants was the raucous nature of the players and the curse words. Again, these courts...
Please.
You're not the only people that play pickleball. Um, again, these courts are to be near the children's playground and adjacent to the peaceful walking trails. My fear is that this is just the possible beginning of what could be a huge disruptive transformation to the Pequitside property if lights and additional parking are proposed in the future due to increased traffic. Do we want this calm, peaceful, passive area of Pequitside to resemble the likes of the backside of the Broadmings Building, where the tennis courts are and the parking lots? Additionally, the appropriation of this project is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our free cash reserve. Our recent police department audit recommended, among things, nine additional police officers and a civilian to man the front desk in the evening. Moreover, we're in a time of economic uncertainty when other needs for the town, such as the library and the new middle school, may be required. On page twenty-one of this annual town meeting report, it is stated that the latest road study suggested twenty million dollars was needed to bring our roads up to good condition. Where are our priorities? So I am against construction of the pickleball courts at Pequitside because of insufficient detail about the location, destruction of the natural environment, noise pollution to the current users of the property and abutters, and other financial needs in the town. I urge our town to... I urge our town to vote no on Article 19.
Thank you. Moving over to my far right.
Gary Nanken, I live at 10 Sumner Street, and I'm an abutter at Pequitside Farm. By nature, I'm not opposed to pickleball or pickleball players, but I am opposed to the way this process has taken place. In the warrant, it talks about that this was, this site was chosen to be least disruptive to neighbors. How can you ascertain whether it's disruptive to neighbors if you don't include the neighbors in the process of the citing of it? I also want to know for the people who are proposing citing this at Pequitside, when the gentleman spoke before, he talked about 60 decibels as being conversational. Pickleball is actually, what Karen just mentioned, 70 decibels at 100 feet away. Constant exposure to 70 decibels is detrimental to individuals' hearing. And you're also talking about having this now adjacent to a playground where kids who are even more susceptible to that, as well as people who are quietly tending to their public garden space right next door. My other question is, has any study been done at the distances you're talking about to the neighbors who are abutters to having a sound engineer actually measure what that sound will be like in people's backyards who abut Pequitside, and how that will affect them? And for all of those reasons, I'm opposed to the way this is, process has taken place. As abutters, we only found out about it when this came out, no other time. And I think people who are abutters to any project in town should be made aware of that through a normal process of communication with the town. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I'm going to go to the select board for a rebuttal, since there were some questions asked within the last set of comments.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the 70 decibels at 100 feet is a stat that is used when talking about pickleball. As I mentioned, at 300 feet, it's 60 decibels, which is slightly above louder conversation. And we're putting eight-foot fence, not six-foot fence. We're wrapping it in a sound wrap, so I understand that there was a conversation with the town engineer, but we have addressed that in emails, that we are going to add that. This was approved at the 2020 town meeting to install the pickleball courts where the old tennis court was, closer to Washington, I mean, to Pleasant Street, but certainly closer to the neighbors on Sumner and on Pleasant Street. We are currently, the pickleballers are playing on Canton High School tennis courts, and we have had no complaints from any of the neighbors on Wildwood Drive regarding noise or anything like that. So we feel confident that this is the right location. We certainly apologize that Sumner Street has these concerns, but we feel that we were very thoughtful in trying to address the noise and locate it at an appropriate place.
Sir, I'll lay a quick rebuttal. Go ahead.
When I researched what the amount of noise was coming from pickleball, it's 70 decibels at 100 feet. 70 decibels is if you're standing 100 feet away from a major highway. And the wrap that you put around fences only decreases the noise by 10%. So it doesn't really mitigate that much noise. And without a true noise study, how do we know that that's how it's going to impact those people and the use of our personal property that's adjacent to that? That, to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move over to this microphone on the far side.
Yes, hi. Melanie Brooks for Pleasant Circle. I guess I had a, I don't know if I can ask a question? Because as a person who's part of the community garden and who has a kid who plays at the playground, I have some concern about availability of parking that would be going through if this were to come through. I didn't see anything in the original proposal for how parking was going to be handled, whether or not, relating it back to affecting the soccer fields and the playground and the community garden. So that's one point. And the other that makes it difficult for me to support this is, again, the amount of noise in something that is supposed to be used, I've always felt is like a public park, all of the walking area and the community garden and the playground, which is fairly quiet right now. To have that amount of noise increase is still a concern to me, and I don't feel it's been properly addressed by what I've seen here so far. Thank you.
Great, thank you for your comments. If I may, Mr. Lockren, there was a direct question about parking. Is there an answer that you'd like to offer at this time?
So the project is going to include ADA accessibility. There will be paving done. We will try to increase the parking. Pickleballers can also park down by the Little Red House and walk up to the pickleball courts, but there is plans to increase the parking slightly. There's only so much space up there that we can do it, though.
Great, thank you for that response. Mr. Camo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. George Camo, 225 Sherman Street. I don't rise for or against it, but just a question through you to the chair of the select board. The project is being slated for placement within the National Register for Canton Corner and will require a public review, a Section 106 review, a federal review. You did mention there was a contingency fund. Will the contingency fund underwrite the cost of that federal review under the Mass Historical Commission rules for the use of public funds within that National Register district?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
So we did build in a healthy contingency fund. We're using some of that for the soundproofing. If we don't have additional funds, we would see if the select board would take that out of mitigation to satisfy that requirement.
Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you. Sir.
Jeff Sullivan for Bailey Street. I had a question if Parks and Rec has signed off on this location for the design of this pickleball court, this exact location. I also had a concern of a 20-foot-high embankment that needs to be built into the ledge to support this flat playing field. As a parent who drops off their kids at Pequitside during the summertime, I mean, that's a pretty hectic location for dropping off kids two, three months of the year, adding 24 additional parking spots. I don't know, I'm just, I'm just not sure where the parking is going to go. And I know at one time, Parks and Rec requested this to be a multi-use surface, as there are very limited hard surfaces in town, and that was given a hard no. And then my last final point, a gentleman earlier mentioned that Ball of a Pond was explored, and as I can tell you, as somebody who's probably explored Ball of a Pond more than anyone in this town, there's plenty of Recreation Zone land that's flat, easily accessible, and that could be incorporated into the revitalization of the Mary E. Wentworth Project. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, we had two specific points that I think the previous speaker just made, and again, I apologize to continue going back to you, but before we get repetitive with other comments, has Parks and Recreation had any kind of input on the location?
So Parks and Recreation has been involved in the process throughout, and they approved the location.
Great, and there was a question that there's going to be a 20-foot-high embankment.
So I know we've talked about a retaining wall. I don't recall anything about a 20-foot-high wall, cliff, anything like that.
Great, thank you. And I know there was other comments made, but they've already been addressed with parking and so forth. Moving right along in the center aisle here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Mark Feldman, and I live at 18 Sumner Street. My wife and I have lived there since '78, raised both of our children, who attended and graduated from the Canton Public Schools. We very much enjoy this town, appreciate all that it offers, including the construction of pickleball courts at a location that will not interfere with the neighbors and at a reasonable cost. But tonight, I rise in opposition to this proposal to construct six courts at Pequitside Farm for several reasons. First, as a taxpayer, I'm appalled that this proposal, estimated at $650,000, is being presented at the town meeting. I will repeat that number and ask my fellow taxpayers to process this. Can Canton not use that money for other important purposes? I understand that these funds are interwoven through a complex formula that involves Chapter 90, state funding, and those earmarked for transportation and roadwork. Admittedly, I do not even understand this budgeting and certainly do not want to upset our overall fiscal plan. But I can see by reviewing the Canton DPW estimate for the construction of the courts that it was developed in May of 2024, which is well in advance of the current tariffs, or well before the current tariffs. I'm interested to know how that might drive the construction cost even higher. I'm also aware that the developer at Paul Revere Heritage may provide fill and help regrade the land. This will help reduce the cost a bit, but I'll assume this project will still cost about $650,000. As a short pertinent background, Canton leadership had proposed renovating the barns at Pequitside Farm several years ago to bring them up to code so they could be rented out for weddings and other events. They felt that we could gain significant revenue from this effort. As part of that discussion, there were going to be significant changes made to the roadway within Pequitside, expansion of the parking capacity, and the addition of street lighting. I don't recall the cost or revenue projections of that project, but when the abutters living on Sumner Street became aware of it, they raised concerns about the noise and the impact of street light shining in their back windows. Cooler minds prevailed, and the discussion ended. As a positive outcome from that event, the town recognized the need to form a Pequitside Farm task force. That included various town officials and two residents from Sumner Street to ensure there would be a fluid line of communication with the closest abutters regarding proposed future changes to the property. I was fortunate to be selected as one of the two representatives for the abutters. Task force met on several occasions, and among other accomplishments, in 2019, the task force partnered with the DPW Conservation Committee and the Select Board to remove the tennis courts on the property that had fallen into disrepair. Then, in 2020, a joint application from Conservation Department of Recreation and the Council on Aging was put forth to the Canton Community Preservation Committee to rebuild the tennis court with a multipurpose tennis pickleball court. I believe the estimated cost for that project in 2020 was $116,600. It's unclear to me why that proposal was not acted upon by Canton CPC. The Pequitside task force was dissolved around 2024, and this then severed the line of communication with the abutters. Because I do not have the time to see or the need to read the official committee minutes to stay informed of new proposals under consideration in this town, I was unaware that the town engineer had been recently tasked to design six pickleball courts at Pequitside Farm. His recommendations were reported at the Finance Committee meeting in March of 2025. The cost for constructing the pickleball courts increased by 560%, or half a million dollars, over that which was proposed in 2020. Likely, this is because of the number of courts and that these are to be compliant with the USA Pickleball Association, NADA. And so tonight, we have a proposal to spend $650,000 for pickleball courts. Despite having served on that defunct Pequitside Farm task force, I am unaware of any Sumner Street residents being informed of this proposal, and we've heard that here this evening. As an abutter, my backyard is separated from Pequitside by a two-to-three-foot-tall stone wall. There's a gravel walk path that runs a few feet from that stone wall along the entirety of my backyard. It is often used by strollers and dog walkers. My property is very similar to others on Sumner Street. We can hear almost everything, including normal conversation from those walking their dogs or strolling the path. We can also hear the voices of the children playing soccer in the field located completely on the other side of Pequitside along Pleasant Street. I'm certain we're going to hear noise from the pickleball courts as well, which will be 400 to 500 feet from my lot. This is probably going to affect residents on Sumner, Powder Hill Road, and the new Larkin Court as well. I'm particularly concerned that at some point in the future, streetlights will be added to the pickleball courts for evening play. I know it's not in the plans now, but when you spend that much money to build a court, I have to believe you'll want to expand the hours of use. This is going to shine directly into our back windows. Given the lack of communication here, I have to anticipate the abutters will not be given any advance notice. I have additional concerns, but I will close by thanking you for the opportunity to present these concerns and by reminding other taxpayers here tonight that the town is asking you to vote to spend $650,000 to construct pickleball courts at a time when funding for other worthwhile projects is drying up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Over to this side over here, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Claire Joyce. I live at 18 Patriots Drive, Canton. I just have a plot at the Canton Park for my garden, and I've been there for over 20 years. It's just such a wonderful, peaceful place, and it's just disheartening when you hear that this is going to happen, and there's going to be so much noise there. I know you're putting up fences and, but my plot is here, and pickleball is right there. It's just going to be horrible now, and I've been there for such a long time that it's going to get ruined. There's nothing I can do about it, I'm just one person, but it's really, there should have been, I don't down pickleball, I don't care who plays pickleball, but why there? It's such a beautiful place. You see people coming out of their cars, sitting, setting their chairs up and reading all afternoon. That's over. It's just, I just wanted to give my opinion. It's not very nice.
Thank you, ma'am. Want to go over to the far side over here?
David Marigan, 2356 Washington Street. I move the question.
Okay. Question's been moved. We've had a motion made. The question was moved, sir. You cannot. The question's been moved. I'm going to call the vote. With that being the case, we have a motion that's been made to fund the pickleball courts as described. I think we've had a very healthy dialogue back and forth with the pros and cons of it. Do you rise in a point of order, sir?
Don't we have to vote on the motion to move the question?
And I'm about to do that.
Sounded like you were going to the underlying question, so maybe I misunderstood what you're doing.
I appreciate the opportunity to clarify that. Thank you. So we have a motion that's been made to approve the pickleball court. We've had a pretty healthy discussion. The motion's been made to move it. I'm going to take a vote now on moving the question, and then we're going to presumably vote the underlying motion. All those in favor of moving the question, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
I say the ayes overwhelmingly have it. We will now vote the underlying motion, which is to, whether to fund or not to fund the pickleball courts. We have a motion that's been made and seconded. All those in favor of the article, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
All right, let's try that one more time. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Could we please take out our cards? All right, all those in favor of the article, please raise your cards.
Point of order, can you repeat it? Yes or no?
This is a yes. If you're in favor, please raise your card. Okay, you may put your cards down. Those opposed, please raise your cards. I would say the ayes have it. The motion passes.
I got the vote. I call for skating pole count.
Okay, I have, I've had an individual raise to count the vote. I believe I need to have, Town Council, Mr. Durensis, is there a requirement? Is there seven that are necessary?
Seven.
I have two to count the vote. Does anyone else request a recount of the vote? We have more than seven. All right, we'll go to the count. All right, we'll go to the count. All right. Could the counters who were sworn in earlier, please come down the front, and I ask that the doors be closed so that we can call the vote, please. Okay, would everybody in favor of the article, please raise your card and keep it up while I think the right sides and the left sides can put their cards down. Again, we're going to recount the center, as you've noticed, so those in the center, Okay, center section, you can put your cards down while they check the count. I corrected, I moved it over. Left side, my left side can put your cards down. My right side can put their cards down. Again, the noes in the center, if you could please keep your cards up, they're doing Okay, by a vote of one hundred and twenty votes in favor, one hundred and nine votes opposed, Article 19 passes. I know it's getting a little late in the hour, so why don't we take a brief five-minute recess? I was told that some folks would like to visit the other side of the wall for a few minutes, so let's get started in five minutes. Anybody that needs to step out, we'll be coming back to Article 12. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if we could please take our seats. Believe it or not, we only have a handful of articles left. They're important articles, but let's give it a go and see if we can get through this. Okay, folks, Article 12, moving right along. Please take your seats. Article 12. I'm going to go to the chairman of the Finance Committee first. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves the motion for Article 12 as printed in the warrant.
We have a motion been made, it's been seconded. Mr. Chairman, for discussion.
This motion will allow the transfer of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars from free cash, also known as the undesignated fund balance, in the current fiscal year, FY '25, to supplement the amount received from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. received from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as part of their Chapter 90 Roads Program for Road Improvements as specified in the town's pavement management system. In addition to supplementing the funds the town receives from the state, this town meeting vote allows the town to move forward on road projects earlier than would otherwise be possible in preparing bids and beginning the needed road repair work. The supplement to the Chapter 90 funds will help make more funds available to maintain our important road infrastructure in Canton.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on Article 12? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare the vote unanimous. Okay, folks, just a quick FYI. We're down to six articles. Well, they're important articles, and we don't want to rush anything, but I just bring to your attention, we have six articles, and we'll move along as briskly as you feel comfortable moving, and we'll see if we can make it a one-nighter, or if we'll get to have a second date this week. Article number 14. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves the motion for Article 14 as printed in the warrant.
Motion been made and seconded. For discussion, Mr. Chairman.
The Finance Committee unanimously supports the appropriation of $50,000 from free cash, again, Undesignated Fund Balance, as it's also known, to be expended for the upcoming Fourth of July community celebration, with the funds being available for use before the start of fiscal year '26.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything to add on the article? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare the vote approved, unanimous.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves the motion as printed in the warrant for Article 23.
Motion been made. Do I hear a second? It's been seconded. For discussion, Mr. Chairman.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously to support the town accepting the provision of the HERO Act that modifies existing abatements to allow an annual increase in the amount of tax exemption qualifying veterans can apply for on their primary property annually. There are larger abatements for veterans that are considered disabled. These beneficial abatements will be partially reimbursed by the Commonwealth, and there is an annual rate adjustment that will be based on the Consumer Price Index. These abatements are sustainable for the town while also providing tax relief for our veterans. It is estimated that the additional financial impact of accepting this provision to the town will be approximately $2,000 to $3,000 in additional abatements annually.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving on to the chairman of the Board of Assessors, Mr. Manning.
Hi, good evening. Gene Manning, 12 Harrison Road, Chairman of the Board of Assessors. I just have a brief PowerPoint to walk town meeting through the implications of this article. Next slide. So this relates back to a bill that the governor signed in July of 2024 called the HEROES Act, which provided increased benefits for veterans of the Commonwealth who served both in the U.S. and overseas. Part of this bill was a local exemption for municipalities here in Massachusetts. The Board of Assessors recommended to the Select Board and to FinCom additional abatement that would be provided locally through the Board of Assessor's office. So these are just a couple of abatements that are available. So $400 exemption for a veteran with a 10% or more disability, and you can see the numbers increased to $750,000, and a full exemption for surviving spouses who suffered loss of life while in active duty. And this article would provide an increased local exemption in Canton. This is just the general law that Tom Meeting is voting on tonight. So in addition to the numbers I just reviewed, if voted favorably, this would provide an annual increase based upon the CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index regulated by the federal government each year. It averages about 2.5%. So each of the exemptions that I showed you on the previous page would be increased by the annual CPI effective July 1, 2025. Eligibility for veterans is based on a letter in determination that the Board of Assessors receives from the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs. In addition, there's also a motor vehicle exemption that would provide relief to Canton veterans for their motor vehicle tax here in the Commonwealth. This would be administered by the Board of Assessors on an annual basis. Next slide. And we're just asking town meeting to support this, to support our veterans. Canton has a long history of supporting veterans here in the community. This is supported by ARFA at Night, our veterans agent, supported by the Select Board, the Board of Assessors, and by FinCom. So we ask you for a yes vote on Article 23. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any further discussion on the article? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the article, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare it passed unanimously. Just to let everyone know, we have clustered Articles 15 and Article 13 because they have, each have a motion in them that relates to the same subject matter. We'll dispense with all of Article 15 first, and then we'll immediately move into Article 13. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee defers motions on this Article 15 to the Community Preservation Committee, but we do support the various motions that they are proposing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Camo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. George Camo, 225 Sherman Street. This is approximately year 13 for CPA, so I'm going to go very, very, very quickly through this. You know where the funds come from? 1% surcharge on your real estate tax, and funds are matched by the Commonwealth. Historically, that match has been between 17% and 42%. And the Community Preservation Act allows funding only in three project categories: historic preservation, open space recreation, and community housing. This is a historical look of the CPA for 2015 to 2025, so you have a chance to see where we've allocated those funds over the life of this particular act in Canton. And I do want to point out that 70%, that big chunk which is open space recreation, includes a 10-year bond for the purchase of the Paul Revere Heritage Site. You're seeing 17% of that funding historically has gone to historic preservation, 11% to housing, and 2% to our administration. This year, before you, there'll be 10 motions. Two are housekeeping motions, two of those are for open space, two are for housing, and four are historic. So there's a total of eight projects and two housekeeping articles, for a total spend of $1.303 million. This body tonight can do one of three things: vote to fund a project in the amount recommended, vote to fund a project at a lesser amount, or vote not to fund a project. The only thing you cannot do is raise the amount of the recommendation that we're making this evening. Let's move to the first motion. This is Article 15, motion one, and I make a motion that this be adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion been made and seconded. For discussion, Mr. Camo.
This is our administrative expense line. Under the statute, we're allowed to spend 5%, to set aside 5% of our funds for administrative expenses. This covers the salary for our administrator, membership to our coalition, equipment, office supplies, and signage. And any funds that we do not spend will go into, back into, the CPA fund. This motion is for $51,214.
Is there any other discussion on motion one of the article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare it passes unanimously.
Thank you. This is for motion two, and again, I move that this motion be adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion been made. Do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded. Mr. Camo for discussion.
Speaking on the motion, this is a debt service payment for the Paul Revere Heritage Site. As you may know, the CPA allows us to incur debt over a period of time. This is the seventh of 10 payments. This motion is to spend $214,490 for the payment on this bond.
Motion been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the article, on the motion? On the motion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare it passes unanimously.
And now we go into the grant applications that we receive. Just by way of quick background, we receive these applications starting in the summer as a pre-app, and they move to a full application. They're reviewed sometime in December. The committee works very hard to vet these. Each and every one has been fully vetted, and several boards have weighed in on each of these. This is Article 15, motion three, and I would make a motion that be adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion been made and seconded. For discussion, Mr. Camo.
For discussion, this is an open space and recreation plan update. It's $100,000 in funding to update a plan that already exists, and we need to update under state statute in order to stay within state guidelines to receive state grants and federal grants for funding for our parks and conservation projects. It'll be administered by the Concom? Yeah, Conservation Commission.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, the motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Declare it passes unanimously.
This is motion four. I move that motion four be adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion been made and seconded. For discussion, Mr. Camo.
This grant application came to us for the second time. It did not pass the first time because we did not have the funding. We did invite them back for a second year. This is for the construction of a pavilion at the Paul Revere Heritage Site to provide shade and weather protection for special events. It's a 2,000-square-foot structure sitting on the original site of the historic barn. The project is expected to cost $300,000 in total. The Revere and Sun Heritage Trust will contribute approximately $100,000. We love projects where there's matching money to bend on the money that we're getting on CPA. Therefore, our recommendations for funding $200,000 of this project.
Motion been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Sir, you're rising to speak at the microphone.
Hi, my name is Dan Malvi. I live at 86 Revere Street. I am in opposition to this. My house is a direct butter to where this is going to be positioned on the site. I just want to say, I love the Paul Revere Heritage Site. It's a beautiful, beautiful open air space, green space. I take my kids out there every single day. Love it. I have a couple of things that I don't like about this. This stands pretty much right in the middle of that upper part of the park, kind of in the way of everything. If you go out there any time of the day, there are a lot of people out with their dogs. I'm not sure if any of them are here today, but my wife spoke to a few of them before this meeting, and they also did not, were not in favor of this. But the biggest issue I have with this is just kind of the programming, mainly at night, how loud it's going to be in the area. Mr. Camo and I have had a few conversations about this. My biggest issue comes off of an event that happened last year, which was a wedding in the summer. There was no notice regarding this event, and when I say it was loud, it was extremely, extremely loud, to the point where the walls of my house were pretty much vibrating. I sent videos to Mr. Camo indicating how loud it was. I know there were other people here that probably heard it. I had multiple text messages from neighbors, people across the Ponce River, saying that they could hear the music, that it must be unbearable at my house, and it was. So I just want to say that I have my concerns about what this pavilion will be used for. I know most of my neighbors agree with me that if this is going to be used for weddings and events like that, that it would be just unbearable for us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ma'am.
Hi, my name is Allison Neff. I'm actually a resident of Stoughton, but have permission to be here tonight as the administrator for the Community Preservation Committee. I rise in support of this. I am also the program coordinator for the Paul Revere Heritage Site. We are aware of the issue which happened last year, and just as a note on that, since then, we have developed a neighborhood advisory committee. There's now a special email list just for neighbors. They are notified two weeks ahead of time, and again, a few days ahead of time, of any outdoor events happening at the site. So we have cleared up the channels of communication. Additionally, there is at this time no plans for lighting for the pavilion, so it is unlikely for there to be involved significantly in any evening events. And I would also note that the Heritage Site events are focused on programming and events for the community, not rentals. In fact, this year, there are at this time no weddings rented at the site at all. The point of the pavilion is for programming and for the people who already use the site to enjoy it more. And as anyone who's been there and it started drizzling, it's great to have a place that is covered. And as someone running programs there, it's great knowing that if we have a concert or something and the weather's not great, it can still happen. So I would suggest, I hope that this will be shown support as something that is intended for community programming, not intended to be a rental perk.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarification. Mr. Camo, do you have any?
So, Mr. Moderator, with great respect to the gentleman from Revere Street, I will say that everything he said was absolutely true, and as soon as we understood what the impact was to this gentleman's house, we have made major changes at this site. We have relocated some of the looking glasses that were on that site as soon as we were made aware that it might impact his home. We have worked very closely and created a committee. Now, by the way, I just have to say, I'm speaking as a member of the Paul Revere Heritage Trust, not as, so if you're confused as to why I'm advocating for this, I'm advocating because we have put in place a number of checks and balances relative to the use of that site. The gentleman knows that we created a committee, and he regularly joins us on that committee, and we are always open to making the changes so that the quality of life is maintained there. This structure will be exactly where he described it. The site was there before he bought the house. He improved the house. He raised the house higher onto that space, and I do know that he has a valid point relative to his concerns. And we will always listen to his concerns and make it be known here in this body that we will always address those. That is the assurance I give this body tonight.
Okay, thank you for that. Is there any other discussion? We have a couple folks that are rising. One folk? Two folk?
Helen Foley, 15 Revolution Way. I was under the impression that this was going to be used for weddings, so has that changed?
It is not used for weddings. The site is available for weddings. We don't get any requests for weddings. We can't support weddings. It's very difficult for us to do that. This pavilion will be used for children's programming, for outdoor programming, for inclement weather, when we have school groups there. It is not intended to be a wedding pavilion. We don't have the kind of facilities that support that.
So it absolutely will not be used for weddings?
I am telling you that we are not intending this for use as a wedding.
But I'm not hearing that it will not be used for weddings.
I can only speak for what I know here tonight.
Okay. I have another question, if I can ask it at this time. I know that funding, they wanted funding for picnic tables and trash receptacles?
Yeah.
Okay. You have a restaurant, you have outdoor dining there. Now you want picnic tables with trash. The seagulls, the rodents. I'm only getting into a few things. What happened to the open space, green open space? I mean, it seems like the park is getting smaller and smaller. The beauty of the park, I mean, I walk the park in the winter. More things being built. I'll be afraid to do that because I'm going to be blocked. This way, it's open. There's 55 and older housing, 60. There's 55 and older housing, 60 units. What about picnic tables? What about the seagulls? The restaurant has some of them now.
Excuse me. Respectfully, the furniture and stuff is a different motion under a different article. We want to stick just to the structure itself of the pavilion, and if you could, please address the comments to the chair, and then I'll bring them back out to the proponents. I just want to try to keep things from getting too personal, that's all.
Okay, so there won't be weddings there? Yes. Thank you.
I'll defer to the president of the Paul Revere Trust if he would like to answer that.
Sure. Mr. Del Vecchio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Victor Del Vecchio, 87 Chapman Street. And I also have a quick slideshow, but to answer your question directly, there may be a wedding there. But the weddings are on weekends. They have to end by a certain time, 9:00 p.m. We've learned from the only real experience we've had in the past five years, we've had one wedding there, and we've taken corrective actions, as Mr. Camo said, including the creation of this advisory committee. So that's not the issue. The weddings is not the issue. It's nine acres of land. It's subject to a conservation restriction. It is about an open an area of land as you're ever going to find in the town of Canton, and that's what we fought for for the past 10 years. That's why folks have moved to that area, and we are committed to that. So this is going to be a wonderful addition. If you'd like me to go into my two slides, I think, to show what this is really designed for... Louis, can you just bring up the slide deck and get to very quickly through this? Next slide. This is the location, because this is the area where the trust, by virtue of the statute, the legislative statute, permits us to manage, and that's the area where it'd go next to the barn, which is going to be a museum. Next slide. This is perhaps really the most important slide. Every department in Canton has supported this with letters. That's the purpose of this. It's for Parks and Recreation. It's for the Canton Public Library. It's for Veteran Services. It's for the Senior Center. It's for the Canton Cultural Commission. It's for the Planning Department. That's why we're doing it. That's why each of those separately submitted letters of support to us and to the Capitol Planning Committee. Next slide, Louis. We also have the support of the restaurant. We have copperware residents that have supported this. They've sent letters in, and others that are likely to use it. But again, there's no lighting. This isn't going to be used in the evenings when it gets dark. Next slide. These are the folks who voted in favor, members of the CPC. Next slide. Members of the Finance Committee. Next slide. And this is really the benefits. I spoke with the Rec Department about possibly having a summer concert series there in the afternoons, you know, for the benefit of folks who want to use it, because we have space. We have parking, and this is with the blessing of the restaurant. Senior Center classes. I've spoken to the director of the Senior Center about this. Special cultural events. Veteran ceremonies. We had one veteran ceremony there already. We have right now a wonderful exhibit, and I hope you all come to it during Canton Heritage Festival, at the site. Go to the second floor of the mill, see how we're supporting our veterans, and we will continue to do so. We will have it for some extended use for the museum. It's shade and relaxation. The one criticism I've heard, and honestly, I walk that site almost every day. I fall in the same category as many of you, is we could use some shade. We can use some place for people to sit down, and that's what we're trying to do here. So that's really the purposes. Those are the benefits. Those are the folks that support it. I strongly urge our town meeting to support this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Del Vecchio. Ma'am.
My name is Patricia Cohen, and I'm a neighbor of the Paul Revere Heritage Site, and I support this Paul Revere Heritage Site pavilion. We're always looking for places to have events, either for children or seniors or any social activity, and this is a beautiful structure that will add to our community. Please vote for this funding.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Down in the front?
Good evening. John Leenetti, 35 Eagle. Since Mr. Del Vecchio presented the slides, everybody who voted yes, I was the only one who voted no. I figured I'd say a quick thing since the hour is late. Pardon me. This structure of the Paul Revere Heritage Trust is unique. Over any other department in this town, in one regard more than any other, it has its own fundraising ability. So it was not the complaint of the abutters or consideration of the noise factor that led me to oppose this. It was simply the fact that, having served on the Canton Community Preservation, I know, as you saw here, there's 1.3 million. Quarter million or so goes to the repayment of the bond that was used to purchase the land for $2 million. We borrowed 10 years of funds for that, and it's being repaid. I think this is the sixth or seventh year. Therefore, they're requesting 20% of the monies available when this site has other funds available and other fundraising. So yes, there was another contribution made, but I applied a different scrutiny to this project because when, unlike any other department, doesn't have fundraising ability, this one does, I felt that these precious few funds would be... could be allocated and used elsewhere where departments did not have other fundraising capability. As one gentleman said, "Tonight, there are many needs of the town," and the only mitigating factor, even having the no, was that I understand no projects were rejected this year that made it through the application process. I'll make another comment on the next motion, but I wanted to also add that, just if anybody's interested in some of the numbers or any of the minority discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a rebuttal, Mr. Del Vecchio?
Comment. One good comment, Mr. Moderator. Victor Del Vecchio, 87 Chapman Street. Let's not forget that it wasn't... the reference was to "we" as if we took 20% of the vote. The "we" meaning the trust is not correct. This town meeting in 2015, 10 years ago, 10 years ago voted to create the Paul Revere Heritage Site, and thank God it did, because that's been a miracle. And secondly, we are raising money. We can't raise all the money. I've never stood in front of this town meeting for the past 10 years and said we could raise all of it, but the fact that we're willing to raise $100,000... How many other groups today have said, "We'll raise $100,000 for a project"? And I will vote in favor of them, too. But this is not... this is just one piece of the fundraising we're doing. We have been doing it, and we continue to do it, and we've done a great job of it. But no, we can't... we can't raise that kind of money. And I've had this discussion with the prior speaker as well, and I think he understands that.
Thank you. Do we need to do some additional rebuttal?
So my rebuttal... partially rebuttal, partially another comment. Just a point of clarification. The $1,300,000 figure is only the eight new projects. It did not include the quarter million payment of the bond, so that 20% figure is not accurate. My apologies that the slide wasn't clear. When it said the 1.3 million, it was speaking of the eight new proposed projects. It did not include the administrative funds or the bond payment. The only other thing I would say is that while there is a mechanism for fundraising, this is... the site is meant for the town. The town voted to have it, and this is just an extension of the town being able to get more use out of it. And as a rebuttal to something someone else said, just as an FYI, there are already trashcans all over the site that are maintained wonderfully by the DPW. So just specifically on the trashcan note, they already exist, and I wouldn't expect that significantly more would be added, except during events, and we always make sure those are cleaned up right away. And in regards to us being able to fundraise, I would also note that when people hopefully come to the Canton Heritage Festival this Saturday and enjoy speaking with dozens of community groups and nonprofits and municipal boards in our community tent, that the trust that the Heritage Site pays for as a benefit to the community. We're bringing things back to the community as well, and I think that it should be noted that it's not just always a "give me, gimme, gimme." We're trying to do this for the community.
Thank you. All right, I'll allow two more comments, and then we'll move on. Sir?
And I'll be brief. Thank you. I appreciate the comment there, but if I'm not mistaken, that 1.3 million would have included some surplus from last year, right? It's not usually 1.3 that has to be allocated. Is that correct? How much carried over from last year to make a allocable number?
There was approximately, I believe, about $350,000 in crossover funds.
In an ordinary year, we'd have about 1.2 or 1.3 to allocate.
Yeah. Usually with what the town raises plus the state match, the past couple of years, it's been about 1.1.
Okay, so I'll maintain my point there, that on average, it's about 1.2 less the funding for the repayment of the bond. So there's, on average, about a million to allocate. So technically, you know, it's about there. Secondly, and I don't want to get into nuances of it, when this was presented to FinCom, literally the revenue from one P&amp;L statement was matched against the expenses of another P&amp;L statement. We couldn't make heads or tails of where the money was coming from or going to. That is a side point. I'm not opposed to the project or the beautification. I'm simply pointing to some discrepancies in the financing and making the town aware of where their money is going for this special fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Wayne Gray, Five Pathic Circle. I ask the moderator to move the question.
Okay. The motion has been moved. With that being the case, let's take a vote on the move, and then we will take a vote on the underlying motion. All those in favor of moving the question, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, unanimously, we will move the question. Now, moving on to the underlying motion. Motion number four in Article 15. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
I say that the ayes overwhelmingly have it. The motion passes. Mr. Camo.
Moving on, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
To Motion... Article 15, Motion Five. I'd make a motion that it be adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion has been made and seconded. For discussion, Mr. Camo.
Well, you'll all hear about this one in a few minutes. We might not get home. This is the Canton Affordable Housing Production Fund. This is a fund that we actually opened a bank account at a town meeting a few years ago to create the opportunity for the Canton Affordable Housing Committee to be able to act on purchasing and securing affordable housing credits within the town of Canton. This has a special focus on seniors and young adults who struggle to afford housing in Canton. It is based upon the Canton Housing Production Plan, which was approved by the Select Board, Affordable Housing Trust, and the Planning Board, and the state. It's interesting because the income limit for affordable housing is 80% of the area median, meaning that if you're an individual, the threshold for this is $92,650. A two-person household is $108,000, and a family of four, $132,000. In short, this is putting money in our bank account for this committee to be able to draw upon to preserve our 10% threshold for affordable housing in Canton. Without preserving this threshold, we expose ourselves to Chapter 40B, which overrides our local zoning, and so we believe this is an important article to fund. You'll hear some opposition to this, and I certainly welcome that, and I know there's some individuals who'll be able to discuss this as well. But the CPA committee worked long and hard, several meetings, to bring this to bear. It would be a recommended funding of $255,000 for this.
Thank you, Mr. Camo. Sir?
Sure.
Joe Amrane, 5 Cape Cod Lane. I just had a question. I know a few years ago, they... this town passed the Affordable Housing Trust, which is different from the Affordable Housing Production. But as I know, the Affordable Housing Trust, I think it was sort of... people might have thought money would go to to make affordable housing, but no money has gone there. All it's done is pay administration.
This is that fund. This is the... this is putting money in that fund that you're referring to, and you are correct. The CPA funded that position for that employee to be able to create the production plan. Now we're funding the trust.
Thank you.
Thank you. Down in the front?
Thank you. Again, John Leenetti, 35 Eagle. And again, I'll be brief. Number one, in my time on community preservation, there was a survey done where many, many, many homeowners said they didn't want community preservations going towards affordable housing. I'm not against affordable housing. I'm simply voicing the folks that voted in that survey not to do this. If you put that aside, the more pressing issue is that when presented to FinCom and even presented here tonight, that $255,000 going towards solving the Affordable Housing 40B issue to maintain our 10% threshold, we have never been at the specific request of having CCPC come back twice. And with all due respect to Mr. Shea, who, as far as I can tell, is a wonderful public servant, and Mr. Camo is very articulate and bright, there literally is no plan that can be produced that we've seen and requested that would articulate how much money is needed, when it's needed, when the affordable designations expire, how it's being addressed. We were presented with three potential properties that will be coming off, that may or may not have it extended, depending upon their funding. It's impossible for me to see, basically as a numbers person, how a quarter million dollars out of precious funds, another 25% of the funds available this year for CCPC, will even be a drop in the bucket towards addressing our town-wide problem or issue of staying above the 10%, which we can all agree to. It has not been articulated how much money is needed, when it's needed, and it's almost impossible to see how this amount of fund will advance that goal. We've requested it. It wasn't provided, and on that basis, I stand to oppose this because it's impossible to see how it gets going. And one other thing in the minority discussion, when the response was given to us, it said we need to get started someplace. There's already half a million dollars in that trust to get started. This is a thorny issue that needs to be evaluated seriously and presented more articulately, whether it's through CCPC or otherwise. We all share a common goal of maintaining that 10%. I just can't see how this does it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I would just want to address a few issues from that minority report. If you took the time, and I know many of you did, to read the minority report that's in your warrant, there are some mistruths there that I'd like to correct. In that report, there's just as was just expressed today, that there's no plan. There is a housing production plan that's prepared by the Housing Trust and was approved by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which describes the kind of projects that would be eligible for this money. Number two, contrary to the statement in minority report about the MBTA Communities Law, that is not affordable housing law, and it doesn't address our continuing challenges. And number three, there's a misleading suggestion in the minority report and was repeated here today, that the resident survey did not conclude that residents don't want to spend any of funds on affordable housing. That is not true. It ranked third, and guess what? There's three buckets in CPA, and we have to spend money in CPA in those buckets. So contrary to what the survey came back as saying, and it did not say they didn't want housing, they just ranked it third, we are finding ways to put that money to use. We were persuaded by the committee that requested this money, not one, but two committees, with the full support of the Select Board, so I would urge you to support this. It's not just starting here. We need to continue with this, and there's never going to be enough money to do this. But if we do nothing, we're at risk.
Thank you, Mr. Camo. Down front?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dave Clow, Canton resident. I just want to touch on a couple of brief points, because I know it's getting late in the night. So the article stresses the preservation and the creation of affordable housing. Currently, we have, within the next 10 years, three large 40B developments, Canton Village, Lamp lighter Village, and Pequit Village, that are all going to be coming off of affordable housing designation. But our affordable housing coordinator has reached out to the first one that's expiring, which I believe is Lamp Later Village, and that housing development has a mass housing loan. And upon doing some research on that mass housing loan, they have covenants in that loan under the federal housing and urban development to continue to have affordable housing along with that loan. So technically, if all of these loans are going to be approved under mass housing, we're not going to have an issue falling below 10%. In regards to the creation, I believe the community preservation has recommended the Westport Seed Capital Fund as a base model to use. That model goes on to give $35,000 per unit, up to $200,000 per unit. So if we were to give 200... So if we were to give two-hundred thousand dollars per unit, we're going to have that money spent on one unit. And that's not going to do anything to solve the problem. So the plan that's put forth on spending this money for preservation and creation doesn't really do what it needs to do. So with that, I would recommend to vote no on this and return the money back to the community preservation so they could reallocate it in the next fiscal year for other projects. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Porter?
Mark Porter, Six Thirty-Three Chapman Street. Sorry, don't sit down. If I could just get a quick clarification about this refinance thing. It's a compelling argument. This is an issue that, you know, we've certainly been talking about for a long time. I understand that if they refinance, they're going to be held to these covenants. But if they were to sell the property, thereby paying off the loan, if they flip the property five years from now, would that still be the case? What would happen in that case?
If they were to sell the property, or some other hedge fund money were to come in and pay cash for these properties, and all of these properties were taken off the board, then we would be well below ten percent. And what's being proposed here is two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars, plus the town's going to provide an additional match. There's nothing the town could do with that money, plus the additional five-hundred thousand dollars that's already in the bank, to solve the problem. There's, they need to look outside the box. What they proposed here could potentially give fourteen affordable housing units, which Canton Village has fifty-six, Lamp lighter has eighty-one, Pequit Village has a hundred and fifty-nine units. So that's, you're not going to make up the fourteen units, if, the units if we lose all of those numbers I just mentioned. So I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you. So then, then I rise in support of this motion. You know, over the course of the last however many years, we've been faced with all sorts of different, hard-to-tackle problems. We had a very low cash reserve back in the early 2000s. We were well below AAA, and we committed each and every year to add to that. Until now, we have a very healthy cash reserve. We have a very healthy amount of money in the bank where we can deploy projects for, out of free cash. That was something that really felt insurmountable back in 2008 that we've now accomplished. OPEB, the promises we've made to our employees ten, fifteen years ago, we had no money set aside for that. It also was an insurmountable goal, and I mean, we're certainly not there yet. We need to keep adding. But again, we made the commitment to put money away for that each and every year. I wish we'd put more money away for that each and every year, so we're sure that we can fulfill the promises that we made to our employees. Affordable housing is a huge problem that clearly we don't have a solution for, not just we in Canton, we as a state, we as a country, don't have a solution for. So I would ask that we support this, to just give these folks every arrow in the quiver they can get. Is this going to solve the problem? Of course not. But if we have a commitment to it each and every year, we should be able to get closer and have the tools to hopefully get us over the finish line.
Thank you. Sir?
One comment to Mr. Porter's question. When CCPC came before us, we just asked a very simple question. What do the owners of those three apartment buildings think about extending the affordable housing designations? Are they looking forward to getting rid of it, having it burn off, in which case we have an issue? Or do they enjoy the affordable housing designation and want to maintain it? We could not get an answer. So that compounded the problem because not only do we not have a financial projection on how to address this issue, we don't have responses from the three property owners that could address the issue and put us in good stead. And to Mr. Porter's point, I'll close on this again because the hour is late. I agree, we should work to solve the problem, but we should go to bigger pools of capital that have the ability to solve the problem and not try to solve it two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars at a time coming from CCPC, okay? Where there's an impossible number to reach that can otherwise be reached from other sources. We could make a proposal here at town meeting to address this issue, but we don't have that before town meeting. We have this. And while I agree with the concept of moving in the direction, I would like to see a plan to address the issue so we, as a community, can address it, not take pop shots at something that requires something significantly bigger for this, for this issue to be addressed. And so, I'll join Mr. Clow in opposing this and asking the funds to be returned back to CCPC. Thank you.
Thank you. The last comment I'll take is from Mr. Emheart.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dave Emheart, Eight Talbot Road, member of the Canton Community Preservation Committee. I'm speaking in favor of this, just like to make a technical point that we might be missing here, and that is, every ten years, we do a census in this country, and that includes the town census. And in 2020, what they do for this SHI, this Sustainable Housing number that we're talking about for ten percent, is you have to look at all the new houses that were built in Canton because those are not affordable. So if they build, you know, a hundred new houses and they're not affordable, then, then the ratio goes down. So every census, because of all the new houses that aren't affordable houses built in Canton, that, that number goes down. So we're trying to get ahead of the twenty, twenty, thirty census by starting to address this problem. And I assure that, I assure you, there'll probably be more to come and a better plan as we go forward. As the Housing Trust, Canton Housing Trust Director explained, this is a tool in his tool belt to at least start to address the problem. And, and one unit is better than no units. When that census comes, if these, if these big developments don't, don't re-up their, their affordable housing, then we're going to be in trouble. So, and that just opens the door to another 40B. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emheart. Do you have anything else, Mr. Camo?
I do not.
The motion has been made, it's been seconded, and it's been exhaustively discussed. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? The ayes overwhelmingly have it. Mr. Camo?
I'd like to make a motion that Article Fifteen, Motion Six, be adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Camo for discussion.
This is a Phase Three supplement of ninety thousand dollars for the, for the Hemingway Housing Project, for a window project. We had funded portions of this at private, previous town meetings, and this is the next phase of that installation. We did approve a hundred and forty thousand dollars at last year, but as folks probably know, costs have doubled. And so, more money is being sought from the state, and they've asked for some additional money from us through the CPA. And it was supported by the CPA.
Mr. Emheart?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dave Emheart, Eight Talbot Road, member of the Canton Community Preservation. I rise against this motion to spend the ninety thousand dollars. We just had a discussion about spending, funding money to the Canton Housing Trust, which is a Canton entity. But here, what we're, what we're being asked to do is to give ninety thousand dollars to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The Commonwealth owns this property. The Commonwealth owns this building. So we're taking precious Canton funds and now giving them to the Commonwealth, when we just had this discussion about how we should preserve our money for Canton for the things that we want to do. We need to stop taking Canton precious funds and giving them to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, as everyone in this room knows, has spent hundreds of millions of dollars of housing in the last year. Can they spend ninety thousand dollars for our elderly and veterans that are living in this building? We should be ashamed. We should be going to the Commonwealth and saying, pay your money for your property, restore these windows, maintain the property going forward. Don't come to us to ask us to restore windows that you never maintained. It's outrageous. And we're just having a discussion about giving money to the Housing Trust, but yet we want to give ninety thousand to the Commonwealth. Doesn't make any sense to me.
Thank you, Mr. Emheart.
Mr. Moderator, we're not giving money to the Commonwealth. That's not what this is. And I have spent the better part of eleven years defending these types of requests for the CPA. I can assure you, the people that live in that building are you and me and our neighbors. They're our most vulnerable people in this, in this community. It's our elderly and the people who cannot afford to live in their own homes. They deserve a safe and warm space, and that's what this money is going for. We're not giving it to the Commonwealth. You're seeing the investment of this money back into the community. And I always take umbrage when people say this. We are the Commonwealth. That's what we are. We are a commonwealth. Think about what that word means. And so, in common, we support this. There's not enough money to support all of the housing projects that the Commonwealth has. This is allowed under the DOR regulations, and every year, there's a small request. And I would just urge you to remember who's in these complexes, and if you think it's that easy to just get upset and go and tell the Commonwealth to do it, it doesn't work that way. And I'm so sorry to disabuse my colleague of, of that notion. So I would really request that you support this article, and I yield to the Select Chair.
Chairman Lockren?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Lockren, Two Fifty-Eight Norfolk Street, Chair of the Select Board. So I stand in support of this article, although the previous speaker. I agree, it certainly gives me a bad taste in my mouth to pay money that the Commonwealth should be paying. It doesn't mean that we shouldn't do this project to benefit our residents and take care of it because if we don't, the Commonwealth is not going to give us money to take care of the building. We're running into this with the Pappas Rehabilitation Center that has been a neglected state-owned property for years, and that's why they were talking about closing it. So ninety thousand dollars to benefit our most fragile, I think we absolutely support. So, Mr. Moderator, Mr. McCourt has also liked to speak, but he can't get up, so I'm going to hand the microphone if that's...
Sounds fine. Mr. McCourt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I've worked for the Canton Housing Authority for thirty years, and every year, we fight for capital dollars to get our places up to snuff. These units are all occupied by Canton residents. Their medium income doesn't even come close to eighty thousand dollars. Our average rent per unit, per year, is three hundred and seventy-five to three hundred and eighty-five dollars. Our rents are fixed by the state. The state has a bond bill every year to give us capital funding, sort of formula funding. Last year, I think it was sixty-eight, seventy-two million. And that gets spread up over all the housing authorities in the state of Massachusetts. Most of the big housing authorities, Boston, New Bedford, they eat up a lot of these numbers because they have such a large group of units that are in need a lot. These things were built, Hagen Court was built in nineteen sixty-seven, Rubin Court, seventy-six, the Hemingway, eighty-three. We have handicap housing up at Randolph Street. We have family units on Pequit Street. We're all over the place, and we make up a lot of that ten percent affordable that we were just talking about. The Housing Authority is here to stay to help, like the previous speaker, Mr. Camo, the most vulnerable, our elderly, our people that don't make fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty thousand. They're our residents. This project that we're talking about has been going on for five years. This is Phase Three. The actual project costs us eight-hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. The town has been supportive since the CPC got enacted to help us with these projects. They've helped us on Pequit Street. They've helped us at Hagen Court, taking care of stairways for the elderly. These, these are our residents. They're Canton residents. And also, the state contributes money also to this fund. So we don't get enough money for capital improvements, and for thirty years, we've been fighting tooth and nail to get money in different funding sources to try and get our properties up to where we can be proud of them. And it's very hard every year because every year, there's something else that needs to be done. And there's a lot of property that we own in Canton under the Housing Authority, which is a state-owned property. But our residents live in it. So please support this, and let us keep this part of affordable housing affordable. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Amrane, do you have something new to add?
Yes, I did. I just wanted to raise my support of this because during COVID, I did the Meals on Wheels to that development. And when I went in there and I saw how dirty those windows were and how structurally, it would break your heart. I don't understand why we can't even do more than what we're doing.
Thank you. All right. We've had a motion that's been made and been seconded. Any further discussion?
The moderator?
Yes, sir.
David McCarthy, Ridge Hill. I'm on the Community Preservation Committee, and I do want to speak in favor. I do want to make a comment, though. I do think that some of the comments that David made are valid, and we really do need to think about how a state-owned property, the town, is paying a very minor portion of maintenance. It is something to be considered and something to be thought about, but I am in favor of supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Seeing no one else waiting to speak, I'll move the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed? The ayes overwhelmingly have it. I declare the vote unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we now adjourn to Wednesday at seven.
What I would respectfully suggest... If I, Mr. Karen, Mr. Karen, if I may. First, obviously, you know you have to be in the microphone to be recognized. But, but stay, stay there, stay there, stay there. You're heard. What I'd like to do, I'd like to propose, is based on the hour, can we finish Article Fifteen, and then we will adjourn until Wednesday at seven, if we can conclude this one article, okay? What are your thoughts, Mr. Camo? Do you think we can do that?
Opposing, if you stop opposing, I can get through them all.
That sounds like a pretty interesting proposition.
I could be really quick, just don't oppose.
Motion seven.
Okay. This is Motion Seven, Article Fifteen, and I move that it be adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion's been made. Is it seconded? I hear a second. Mr. Camo for discussion.
First of all, I want to disclose that I have a conflict with this, that I've not expressed any opinion on this until tonight, when the Commonwealth does allow me to have a comment on this. My disclosure is I am the president of the Canton Historical Society. I did not shepherd this through the project. I did not vote in any portions of this project, but I will vote this evening, which is allowed under the rules of ethics. The Massachusetts, the Canton Historical Society is asking for forty thousand dollars that they will match with the ten thousand dollars for a building assessment for the building that houses Canton's historic and cultural treasures. Our goal is to do a current conditions assessment, make the building ADA accessible, and evaluate the basement space for conversion into an archival center.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare it unanimous. And before you go any further, Mr. Camo, I just wanted to make a note on the prior motion, Motion Number Five. I do declare that the two-thirds majority that's required was achieved in that vote. Just want to put that on the record.
Thank you.
Motion eight.
Article Fifteen, Motion Eight, I would move that it be adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion's been made. Do I hear a second? It's been seconded. For discussion, Mr. Camo.
This is a request from the Canton Public Library, full disclosure. I'm also a trustee of the library.
It's a small town.
It's a small town, right? But there's no ethical conflict here. I'm elected a position that we're recommending a funding for two-hundred thousand dollars for historic restoration, for the degradation of some of the rooms and historic details that were damaged as part of the roof project. This is part of a larger historic project. They have requested two-hundred thousand dollars for the CPA for this nineteen oh-two historic portion of the building.
Thank you, Mr. Camo. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare the vote passed unanimous.
Next up is Article Fifteen, Motion Nine. I would move that it be adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion's been made and seconded. For discussion, Mr. Camo.
This request comes to us from the Department of Public Works, who are also overseeing the, one of the oldest public cemeteries in America, founded in seventy... one of the oldest public cemeteries in America, founded in 1717. They've asked for money for a master plan and repair work on the most historic section of the cemetery. We are bifurcating this request into two pieces. $95,000 will fund a master plan that will help us understand the extent of the work and the damage and the repairs that need to be done to that cemetery. And then, once that's done and approved by the Canton Historical Commission, working with the DPW, immediately, $200,000 will be dispersed so that they can begin working on the most critical grave sites.
Thank you, Mr. Camo. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare it passes unanimously.
And finally, this is Article 15, Motion 10. I move that it be adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion has been made and seconded. Further discussion, Mr. Camo?
This motion is for the Ponkapook Schoolhouse. It's an 1844 schoolhouse in Ponkapook, right at the gateway of the town. It is for a historic facade and bell tower preservation project being done by the owners, which is the Christ Ambassador Ministries. This schoolhouse is on the State Register of Historic Places. In order for us to fund this project, there are three caveats built into this, so that we can meet the requirements of the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court ruling on how money can be used, so that we don't offend the anti-establishment clause of the Massachusetts Constitution. In this particular case, a preservation restriction in perpetuity will be obtained ahead of time for this historical resource prior to the disbursement of funds. Two, the funds cannot be released until the building permit is issued for the full renovation and expansion of this project. And three, that all work be done under the Secretary of Interior Standards of Historic Preservation. Our recommendation is for $123,000 for this project.
Thank you, Mr. Camo. I see we have Mr. McCarthy has risen.
Thank you, Mr.- This is David McCarthy, Ridge Hill Road. I speak in opposition to the schoolhouse funding, the bell house tower, and the facade preservation. Frankly, I'm on the Community Preservation Committee. I am the one no vote on this, and I frankly just don't understand it. I don't understand why our historic preservation should go to a private property that is not used by the public on a regular basis. I know that when historic preservation is done, we can have access to it. I simply don't understand it, and I urge people to vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
This article also has the support of the zoning board and the Canton Historical Commission. In addition, the public interest here is the preservation of this historical artifact that dates to 1844. We are not preserving the church or any portion of the church. It is the facade and the historic bell tower, and we really think it's important to try to find ways to protect our historic assets, and that's what this is for.
Thank you for that clarification. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I declare that it overwhelmingly passes, and it does achieve the 2/3 majority that's required. Okay. So at this time, folks, as Mr. Karen makes his way to the microphone, head right up there. But pause when you get there. I will entertain the motion. We will reconvene here on Wednesday at 7:00.
I move that we now adjourn to meet Wednesday at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. We'll see you guys here Wednesday at 7:00. Literally, folks, just remember, we literally have tens of millions of dollars you'll be appropriating or not on Wednesday, so please come in, have a good dinner before you get here. Thank you.